Good evening. This study session of the Board of Education for May 27, 2014 is called to order and I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Director Morton is absent this evening. So before we get started, I'd just like to take a minute and recognize our wonderful Chief Financial Officer Neil Sullivan. Neil couldn't be with us tonight, but I think it's important that we recognize his service. He will be retiring this Friday. Neil has done an absolutely fantastic job for the district and I'm not even sure how long he's been here. Is it three years? Four? Yeah. Did a wonderful job stepping into this role. He has so much experience working with school districts in the financial capacity that we were so fortunate to get him. But I, even though he's not here, I think we should all give an applause for Neil and the wonderful work he did for us. And I hope he's watching us. He's streaming us tonight. So, to move on to our agenda for this evening, first we'll have public comments. Ms. Hewson, I know we have people signed up for public comment. You want to go ahead and call them and I'll go ahead and read the instructions.
Our first two, Greg Burl and Josh Himmel.
Great. So, thank you very much for taking the time to come to the Board meeting tonight. We deeply value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. And our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen and reflect on the thoughts and opinions of others. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to Board members, staff, and other presenters. The Board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but the Board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you have left your contact information with Ms. Hewson. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.78.012, speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the Board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. Any complaints about specific employees should be directed to the Superintendent's Office and will not be heard in this forum. Excuse me. So, you have a total of three minutes. For the first two minutes, you'll see a green light appear in front of you. For the next minute, there'll be a yellow light and when your time is up, a red light will go on and a buzzer will sound, just in case you're not watching the light. And we respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We sincerely appreciate your input and we thank you for your cooperation and thank you again for being here tonight. Mr. Burl, go ahead.
Okay. So, good to see you all again. Now, this evening, I'm going to be a little careful with my remarks because it's so easy to offend people when the subject is race and racism. Racism is so pervasive that we can choose to see it or not to see it in every situation involving those of different ethnicities. So, I came here tonight to speak as an African-American, as a former MLC parent, and a self-proclaimed expert on American racism. See, I'm thinking back to the Senate Judiciary Committee hearings on Clarence Thomas's nomination. Because there were no African-Americans on that panel, there was no one to call into question the competence of the nominee, right? No one to follow up on the charges leveled by Anita Hill. No one to scoff at the high-tech lynching that Justice Thomas alleged. I believe that Justice Thomas's record on the bench calls into question his competence. So, today, what I wanted to mention is that there are better reasons than racism behind the problems that the principal of one of our schools is having, right? I know I'm walking a fine line because I'm not supposed to criticize anybody by name.
Yes, you are.
MLC was founded on a model of collaboration between students, parents, and faculty. And I believe that it makes no difference, the race of the person who wants to govern the institution with unilateral directives from the adminosphere. MLC parents, I've found, are generally uninterested in being told what to do, even if they're being told what to do, what they would have decided to do in any event, but I don't believe this is the case. I am glad that Representative Lou Frederick, a prominent African-American, has also publicly commented on this issue. He is a former MLC teacher and parent and he does not think that racism is the driver of the current criticism. Teachers that I've talked to have told me that there's also a body of evidence to this effect. Racism is, however, at the heart of the problems with the schools that after nine years, I'm suddenly unwilling to sub at, but I don't think it's the racism of the staff. I think it's racism at the district level. You remember, the first time I spoke to you, I said that education is a system of relationships between educators and students. And in some schools in our city, these relationships have been repeatedly damaged and/or destroyed by budget cuts, reassignments, and so on and so forth. And so, I guess I'll have to come back again in order to talk about what I'm finding at some of these schools. But I think we all have to see that this is a question of reaping what one sows and we are not going to solve these problems by making teachers afraid to discipline or fail students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Josh Himmel. My last name is spelled H-I-M-E-L. And my oldest child attends Llewellyn Elementary and I'll have at least one child in PPS for the next 16 years. So, I have a long-term interest in the safety of our schools. I'd like to talk about the current proposal to take 25.7 million out of the Summer Improvements Fund. That's the fund that pays for seismic upgrades for a bunch of the schools. And specifically, I'd like to ask the Board to vote no on that proposal. So, as you know, our region is decades overdue for a catastrophic 9.0 or greater earthquake. Many of these huge earthquakes have happened here in the past, but none within our living memory. It will happen again and it'll be nothing like the one that we all probably remember, the 5.6 spring break quake that jiggled the area for 45 seconds back in 93. A 9.0 will be several minutes of violent shaking that will collapse buildings and kill thousands of people. According to the scientists and government agencies that study this issue, it could happen at any time. I think the general population isn't yet aware of the severity of that risk, but as Board members and leaders of PPS, I expect you already are. However, you are considering using funds that are currently slated for making safety upgrades to mitigate this risk of injury and death that our students face today and using those funds to instead make three schools larger, not safer. I'm not against making the three high schools larger. I've read the additional criteria behind the request for the funds and they strike me as reasonable education goals. Achieving them at the expense of the safety of thousands of other children in old, unmodified, collapse-prone buildings does not seem reasonable. The safety of all the students must come before the educational goals of a select group. This seems especially clear, given that, as stated in the May 24 memo from Jim Owens, the goals behind the additional criteria could be achieved through other means, such as boundary changes or reducing community use spaces. Please do not build extra classrooms at the expense of safety upgrades. The risk is too high. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much.
Our next two speakers, Edward Wolf and Joshua Curtis.
Good evening, members of the School Board and Superintendent Smith. My name's Edward Wolf. Tonight, I'm speaking to you in my capacities as a Board member of our Portland R Schools and as a co-founder of the Parents Initiative, Oregon Parents for Quake-Resistant Schools. Listening online to last week's Board discussion regarding the additional criteria for the high school projects, I heard the word "heartburn" so many times that I started to hope that a staff member had been dispatched to Walgreens to get a jar of Tums. I admit, I felt some heartburn myself, shared by OPQRS co-founder and PPS parent Amanda Gersh at the possibility that the fiscal implications of the criteria could put the district's commitment to seismic improvements in jeopardy. In school districts across Oregon, as the previous speaker noted, the commitment to seismic safety remains tenuous and our understanding of the hazard marches steadily forward. The issue is one that can inflame parent and community fears and cynicism like no other. After reflecting on the district's commitment, I urge you to support the adoption of the additional criteria. Here's why. Last week's discussion and some of the public comment I've seen since then presume a zero-sum trade-off between the high school projects and seismic projects. But from a whole-program perspective, however, the three high school projects bring the largest earthquake safety benefits delivered by this bond. The decision to fully modernize Roosevelt, Franklin, and Grant High Schools, three of the district's biggest masonry buildings, is, I believe, the boldest step forward in earthquake safety taken by any Oregon school district. This is not to diminish the importance of the summer improvement projects. Among the schools scheduled for summer improvements, at least 17 have received no previous seismic safety investment. These include the unreinforced masonry schools James John, Ainsworth, Buckman, and Creative Science. Making these and other schools, many other schools, safer is something to celebrate. This district began its commitment to seismic improvements with the 1995 bond, using a FEMA-recommended approach called incremental seismic rehabilitation, long before other Oregon school districts began to address the risk in any systematic way, and the current bond expands on that commitment. Portland's work on earthquake safety is far from complete. I expect the theme to be a priority in future bonds, but I want to conclude with the matter of additional criteria. To modernize the structures of our high schools without also optimizing their capacity to support a robust educational program duly influenced by community desires and by what staff learn as projects are implemented would be a failure to fulfill the ultimate purpose that Portland voters affirmed at the ballot box: to support the teaching and the learning that Portland students deserve. So, I urge you to support adoption of the criteria for the high school projects, remembering that high schools are the cornerstone. And to the full extent possible within the fixed face value of the bond, get these high school projects right. Keep this program on track. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Curtis. My last name is spelled C-U-R-T-I-S. I'm the co-chair of our Portland R Schools and I'm speaking tonight in favor of the proposed changes to criteria for high school educational specifications. OPOS believes that these changes are necessary to provide students with a full educational program. Our schools need to be built to accommodate the increasing number of students that will come as Portland's population grows. Our schools should also be built to allow students to enroll in a course during every period of the school day. Meeting these needs is critical and deserves your support. I would especially like to highlight the need to build schools that allow students to take more than 24 credits, which is the minimum required for high school graduation. Many competitive four-year colleges expect students to take more than 24 high school credits. If our schools assume that students will only take 24 on average, that'd imply that for some students to take more than 24 credits, others would have to take less, forcing them to pay for summer or night school or to not graduate at all. If we want to have a district where 100% of our students graduate from high school, we need schools which will accommodate that. I would also like to comment on the process that led to these changes being made. I think it is entirely appropriate that PPS apply the knowledge it is gaining by redesigning Roosevelt and Franklin to the overall educational specifications for our high schools. There's an especially great need for this learning in areas such as career and technical education, which have suffered from a long absence in many of our high schools. PPS should also use the redesign process to think about how to better serve students from groups which PPS has historically underserved. How can our high school buildings better serve special education students, students whose first language is not English, low-income, and minority students? I hope the design process continues. As the design process continues, PPS will focus on planning learning environments that will serve these students. While we should appreciate the learning that is happening in this design process, we should also encourage this learning to be transparent. The process of communicating these proposed changes to the public should have been better. The Bond Advisory, no, it's not that. Accountability Committee and other community groups should have been provided with a full rationale of changes before they were coming to speak with you last week. Also, some of the changes were very predictable. In October of 2011, Grant High School had 1,565 students, Franklin had 1,480. And the district was experienced growth in lower grades, which would predictably lead to increases for future high school populations. Also, Oregon has required 24 credits to graduate from high school since at least 2008. I would just like to conclude by saying that when you're more transparent in your process, it will be easier to garner support for changes and for future bond work. And I hope that with that transparency, there will be more support for these changes and that you are convinced that these changes are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Our last two speakers, Sarah Witter and Scott Bailey.
My last name is W-I-T-T-E-R and I'd like to thank you all for letting me speak this evening. I'm here to ask that you do not approve the additional funding requested by the voter-approved bond money to be used on the latest proposed high school improvements. This money must go toward the seismic improvements specified in the bond that we voted on. There were specific schools listed in that bond and the thought that those schools will not be seismically upgraded is horrifying to us. As all of us know, as other people who've spoken tonight have mentioned, many schools have a very, very high chance of collapse in this city. Our children happen to go to one of the worst and we are listed in that bond as a group that should be covered. So, I'm not here to spout the statistics that we all know. I'm not here to make the argument that we need the upgrades. I'm here to ask you to follow through with what the bond promised to do. I think the hardest thing as a parent is that in the event of a major earthquake, we would lose our children. They would die. There is no question about that. There is 100% chance of collapse in many of our school buildings and that's not okay. It's just, I watch my children go to school in the mornings and I don't know if they're coming back. I try not to be emotional. It's hard. It's not an exaggeration. It's the truth. If you want an example, take China in 2008. Over 5,000 children died in their schools, in their classrooms, while buildings around them survived. And it was because they were in substandard buildings for earthquake environments. That's what we're faced with, right here in Portland. And if there is an earthquake, our children will die and it's not just our children. It's the staff that's there, it's the teachers, it's the administrators, it's the parents, it's anybody in those buildings. So, I'm just asking, please keep your word. Do what we voted with this bond. Please give the seismic upgrades to the schools that were listed in this bond. If the high schools want additional changes, that's great. I'm all for it, but that should be the work of another bond. That was not specified in this one. And I'm just going to leave you with one thought that goes over and over in my mind, which is that you can teach children in less than optimal environments. We all know that's possible, but you cannot teach children that are dead. Thank you.
You're a tough act to follow. Thank you for what you said. My name is Scott Bailey. I'm here on behalf of our Portland R Schools, taking the opposite point of view. In the last week, we've been trying to chase down why the price tag on high schools has increased. We know more than we did a week ago in being able to tell that story, but we still don't have the full story on that. In particular, we don't have the math to show what the need is for the increased classrooms. There was a change in what the assumed credits were. There's 100% capacity usage that's assumed. We don't understand the rationale. We'd like to see the math. We hope that you ask to see the math going forward too, to understand exactly what it would mean to shave a couple of classrooms here or a couple of classrooms there. Our understanding is that whatever those numbers were, the rationale was that this is space that is needed for basic core needs going forward for our high schools. And we believe you shouldn't deviate from that until you have the math, until you know what the rationale is, until you know what you're actually cutting. It's a real trade-off in terms of these projects, but here's the thing. We don't know exactly what the costs are going to be for this bond work going forward. We don't know what's the actual construction tab is going to be. We know that we saved a nice chunk of money on the first bond sale. We don't know if that's going to continue going forward. I suspect it is, that interest rates aren't going to go up anytime soon. If we shrink the high schools now, there's no going back. If you vote now to delay some of those projects, there are two alternatives to do that on time, actually. One is that there's savings through the bond sales going forward that would give us that extra money. And two is, in a bond that couldn't pass in 2016, that would pick up the work for those schools going forward. But if we shrink the high schools, there's no going back on that. And my time's about up, so I'll stop there. Thank you for your attention and for your work.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, after, we'll go ahead and move to the next part in our agenda, a quarterly update from the Office of School Modernization. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would. So, Jim Owens, who's our Director of Office of School Modernization, will present the quarterly report, which you received in your packet, and the narrative will actually be different than what you received in your packet, going deep on one aspect of it.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, and good evening, School Board. Our first topic tonight is the quarterly OSM update that, as Superintendent Smith mentioned, is in your Board packets and hopefully you've had an opportunity to peruse it. It is similar to the report that OSM provides on a monthly basis. And what I'd like to do is just highlight a few features on the scorecard so that we can provide some context. And I'd like to complete with a really great video of a student learning opportunity at Franklin High School that was done recently and I think it'll really highlight some of the wonderful things that are going on with our consultant teams and our builder teams with our students. So, in terms of our bound scorecard, it continues to show that the program is on plan across all four of the perspectives that we have: budget, schedule, stakeholder, and equity. However, a number of concerns are noted relative to budget, schedule, and equity perspectives that I'd like to highlight. The additional criteria for the high schools, which we'll be discussing further tonight, is impacting the Roosevelt and Franklin projects. OSM needs a decision on this if we're to move forward into design development and further into the projects and stay on schedule and our revised budgets, certainly to ensure that we complete these two important projects in time to be ready for students in the fall of 2017. Budget concerns for the high schools relate to both the additional criteria and the work associated with value engineering that both the Franklin and Roosevelt teams have been engaged in. For improvement project, or IP14, our six construction packages came in over budget, so we're dipping into project-level reserves to ensure that we can execute the work this summer. We may need to be looking at other resources to ensure that they're properly funded, depending on what we find as we get into construction. We are committed to completing all 12 of the schools this summer, just as we completed the six last summer. In addition to schedule concerns for Roosevelt and Franklin, IP14 is also showing concern, the yellow cells, due to a variety of factors. Our construction season, if you will, this summer is reduced by about 12 days and it necessitated putting in a six-day work week with the firms to ensure that the work was properly scheduled, planned, and scheduled. We also added additional scopes this summer. We have elevators in two of the schools. We also have six construction packages versus the three that we had last summer. We have awards in place, however, and we're in the process of executing our notice to proceeds so that we can get the firms mobilized as soon as the students leave the sites and then get on with the work. So, we still expect to complete that, but I highlighted the schedule as a concern because we've got some different dynamics this summer that we're working with. The equity perspective continues to show concerns. Payment to minority-owned, women-owned, and emerging small-business-owned firms remain steady at approximately 11%. We're also rolling out our Apprenticeship Trade Participation Program in conjunction with the City of Portland, who will be working with our staff in evaluating how firms are doing, providing opportunities for state-registered apprentices. We have a pretty ambitious goal there of 20%, and so all the firms are committed to striving to achieve that, but this is the first time that we're actually rolling that out. We do have good news on the student engagement front, which you'll recall in the equity perspective is the third leg. Changing the performance measures on the student engagement is something I'm going to highlight here in a moment to ensure that we're aligned with how the district is doing relative to the framework for career learning. Our contractors and consultants are operating in the exploration zone for grades nine through 12. So, in terms of our performance measures, we are looking in terms of changing it to align with Tier One, which is large group, Tier Two, which is small group, and Tier Three, which is one-on-one. And I'll highlight some of the successes we've seen there. So, our bond-funded consultants and contractors participate in career learning experiences in a number of ways. We have many opportunities for them that they can pursue.
Jim, can we go ahead and ask questions during your presentation? Does that work for you?
I was planning to invite questions after completing, however, if you'd like to ask as we go through.
Okay. Shall we wait? All right. Thank you.
So, up on the slide are a number of the opportunities that firms have to participate and those are continuing to provide opportunities for firms and for students. I think as the bond program picks up momentum and we bring more firms aboard, the opportunities for the career counselors in the high schools is increasing and we're getting more exposure to the building level. In addition, we're starting to offer some internships for the first time and we're also reaching into other opportunities for eighth-grade students as they look at their high schools they'll be attending in terms of providing career day opportunities. There we go. This is a template that shows the cumulative experience that we're having with student engagement. And this isn't entirely a McDonald's-type format where we're showing a number of customers served, but we wanted to capture the amount of students that are impacted by the numerous opportunities that we have for large group and small groups. And so, as we look at the period between March of 2013 and April of 2014, we've actually impacted over 7,600 students relative to different forums. We're also trying to showcase the number of firms- We're also trying to showcase the number of firms that are engaged actively with students down on the lower left-hand side, the number of presenters that have been speaking to different groups and attending different forums, career learning experiences, and the total number of hours that the firms are contributing. We're planning to include this information in monthly updates to you as we showcase information in the balanced scorecard. This is a depiction of what April looked like relative to the previous slide and the number of students that have been impacted. Our framework for career learning is shown above. We're primarily operating in the exploration zone for grades nine through 12, but we're also, for the awareness level, I mentioned, we have eighth graders coming into Franklin this summer who will be having an opportunity to engage here. And then the third category, the preparation phase, this is the, these are the active internships that several of our consultants and builders are offering to students this summer. Again, this highlights the three tiers I mentioned earlier under exploration. We're very much coordinating closely with Jeanne Yurkovich and her team to ensure that this is fully aligned with how the district is managing this overall. A little more information in terms of the groups and the types of activities that are associated with each of the tiers. At this point, I'd like to pause and show a short video that was taken by David Main, who's our Capital Communications Manager. It showcases a recent example of career learning experience at Franklin High School. It's about four minutes long, so after it completes, I'll answer any questions on this particular topic before we move into the next one.
The Portland Public Schools team and its consultants charged with designing and building the modernized Franklin High School gave Franklin students a unique opportunity to learn about construction-related careers.
You can use an architecture degree to become a developer or contractor?
The Franklin modernization team includes PPS Project Director Debbie Pearson. We spoke about her role as an owner's representative, and architect Karina Ruiz, who described an architect's career path.
About an architectural education, is it really kind of forms a foundation, and then you can really take that however you want?
Tony Vandenberg, construction manager from Herry International, and Tim Boggs, a general contractor from Skanska, both described what they do and the educational pathways that lead to their career.
The main thing was to kind of like hear the people's points of view who are already in the career, and like, kind of to know how to get to that point.
I'm interested in engineering and like civil engineering, and so I figured this would be a good opportunity to come and look at this.
First thing we're going to do is break you guys up into teams.
The event was more than lectures. In a lively, hands-on competition, teams of students were given an opportunity to experience what an owner, architect, contractor, and construction manager actually does on a project. They had to design, then draw a building.
It's going to fall if I don't support it.
Purchase building materials, in this case, uncooked spaghetti and marshmallows, and then construct the building based on their designs.
The spaghetti is similar to like a steel bar in say, like a gigantic skyscraper, just the steel frame. Well, the marshmallows represent sort of the weld, you know, the glue that would hold it together. We had a group of people that each one played a specific role, and that really helped us to see like, if I was an architect, I had to design a project, then it goes to the construction manager, and he decides the cost, how many materials do we need? So it was really, really interesting, and all of this comes back from the owner that he says, you know, I want this design this particular way.
Modernization team judged the entries based on concept, how closely the visualization drawings matched their owner's ideas, and how well they held up structurally.
It just all pieces together like a puzzle perfectly, and it all comes down to the building.
Well, I just kind of liked my design coming to life. Like watching it actually being built was just amazing.
The winning team celebrated their victory with a bundle of swag from the Franklin Project team.
I learned that it's actually quite a process to design something like this and actually build it. And designing the drawing, drawing it all out is actually much harder than I thought.
My favorite part of it was just like probably the building and the teamwork it took to actually design a building and actually see it come to life and put together.
After the event, students were invited to apply for internships with the businesses working on the Franklin Bond project.
Okay, that was a pretty jazzed-up presentation, and we're really excited to be involved with so many kids, and again, I think we can look to see more of this as we move forward. But this time, I'd like to take any questions that you may have regarding the OSM quarterly update.
Director Blau.
Thanks for the report, and thank you to our architects at Franklin. That was a great video and great to see students engaged and begin to really understand that process because it's so abstract. How exciting for students to begin to realize, I heard teamwork, I mean, it's really that new, new way of working together and how much it takes to get a project complete. But back to my question. Sorry. So I have, I think, three questions. One is, I'm looking at the balanced scorecard. There's an indicator in the overall perspective that talks about market conditions and competition on construction work are causing concerns, monitoring closely. Can you talk a little bit about what that is and what you mean by that?
We're noticing some trends in the market right now that's resulting in reduced competition on our work, and we're seeing significantly higher bid pricing than what we've seen previously. Comparing this spring to last spring has been pretty significant, and so much of it, it's hard to attribute to, but there's a significant increase in construction here in the Portland metropolitan area, and I think that's manifesting in not having as many firms who are pursuing this work. We are trying to get a better sense of it, and we're reaching out to a number of firms to ask, are there other factors that you're looking at relative to us? We're also concerned about, are there any aspects in our solicitations in terms of how our statements of work are developed, in terms of our bid packages, the way we're structuring the work that's inhibiting it? As a public agency, I think it's important, certainly it's an important fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to ensure that we maximize competition on work, so we'll be watching this very closely as we move forward. I wanted to highlight it in the overall perspective, just to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, and I actually think as Beaverton just passed their bond, which congratulations, I just think these are the market forces that you begin to see as construction begins to increase, you have more people that are able to work on other jobs, and so you get less competition. Another question I had is you highlighted, I'm looking at the budget perspective. There's two things. One thing, I think I understand, which is the construction cost current estimate for Roosevelt and Franklin, and I think what we're just saying there is that what we're expecting to cost, the current estimate is higher than we were expecting.
Right.
Okay. Which is probably related to the previous question I just asked. The second question on that same page is about the Marshall campus being, budget being increased. Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
We, one of the program categories in our bond are swing site and transportation improvement category, and so in looking at our overall needs in terms of what spring, swing sites we need to be making improvements at, we primarily are looking at Marshall, of course, for Franklin, and then subsequently for Grant, and then we're looking at another site for Fabian. So in looking at the needs at Marshall and looking at the site improvements, looking at tenant improvements that are needed to accommodate the group there, we saw we needed to nudge that up a bit. It was previously running about 3.4 million, so we wanted to give ourselves a little more flexibility there. Don't know that we'll end up at 4 million. We also have embedded in there transportation costs, and we were pleased to note that the TriMet bus passes have been renewed for another year. So part of this budget incorporates transportation costs that we may or may not have to provide.
Okay, great, thank you. And my last question is, this is the part that I just don't understand. Looking on the schedules perspective card, under improvements for 2014, the prime contract notice to proceed, can you just explain to me what that is and why it gets a yellow?
Great questions. The prime contract notice to proceeds is the mechanism that we get the contractors started so that they can mobilize on-site and begin ordering the materials they need to incorporate into the sites. It's an important milestone on a project. It follows the award action. I mentioned earlier, we have awards for all six of the contracts, but the notice to proceed is an important measure that gets all of them started and will allow them to also mobilize on-site, just as kids are leaving.
And can you help me understand why are we delayed in that, or why is that delayed or yellow?
Oh, just, we got off to a later start for the IP-14 work. We ended up expanding the number of construction bid packages that we expected, so we're running several weeks behind where we would have liked to have been, so.
Okay.
And it's just a comment that, you know, it's another factor that goes into starting a little later than we wanted to.
Thank you.
Other questions? I think Greg asked all mine, so.
Yeah, I was just going to say he definitely.
Thank you very much, Director Blau.
No, you definitely asked several of mine.
Director Regan, you have some too?
Yes.
Okay.
You noted in your presentation that the construction timeline for the summer was reduced by 12 days, so I know Labor Day's early, and I think we have a couple of snow days. But 12 days seems like a lot. Why is it, why is it that many?
Just in looking at the school calendar, in terms of the snow days you mentioned, and then the earlier start, it actually comes out to 12 days in terms of the total impact.
That doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense?
No. Maybe by the way the days fall, Monday through Friday workdays?
Yeah.
That would normally be available, I don't know.
Right, in terms of our normal five-day-a-week work schedule, by compressing it or accelerating the schedules to six days a week, which many of the contractors ended up working last summer anyway, but it's just a way to highlight that we have a compressed, we have a lesser amount of days available to us this summer than we had for last summer. It's just, it's just an index of concern when we look at the differences.
And there's no opportunities to get some of the work started on-site while kids are still in school at all?
It's very difficult, the type of work, I mean, we can get the contractors starting to mobilize on-site that last week, but as far as the work, it's, you know, it's very, it's very disruptive to teaching and learning activities, and we really can't get started. In fact, we have teacher grading the following, let's say the last day of school is the 13th of June, and we have teacher grading the following Monday and Tuesday, so we want to be careful not to disrupt that process. So really, they'll really get started, and it's that Wednesday.
So I also had a question on, I think it's listed under equity perspective on your thing, but objective C is meet student participation. I'm not specifically sure why that's listed under equity perspective, but you have Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, and it looks like in Tier One and Tier Two, we are relatively hitting it out of the ballpark. The Tier Three, the one-on-one, long-term activities are internships. How did we set the green, yellow, and red targets, and is that an area where we might want to have the board weigh in? Because I guess, I look at 25 students participating in internships as a pretty minimal number with the amount of work that we're doing over the years. So I'm just kind of curious how, I mean, again, I think that in terms of what we saw here, and in terms of some of the larger group activities, it's great, but I guess I was looking and hoping that we would be seeing more internship opportunities.
Okay, great point. We, again, this is the first time you're seeing this. This is a change in terms of the performance measures and the performance targets. The performance targets were developed really as an initial stab at how many students might we expect on a, remember, this is project-by-project basis, how many would we expect to have on the Franklin Project, for example, over the duration of the project? That differs from how many students we would expect to see engaged on, say, IP-14, which is a single project, but it's of a much shorter duration, and of course, we have, we actually have more contractors on IP-14 than we do on the Franklin Project. So it was an attempt to try to balance some measures. Clearly, we can do some more work on it, and would welcome input from the board or others on how we might set different levels of expectation, but we do have a solid number of interns this summer that the firms are sponsoring, and we're looking to see how that's going to work.
Just to clarify this, and I really appreciate the way that you've broken us out into differentiating the activities and being specific about that, and then having these metrics, so that's fantastic. So just so I understand, though, the metrics you have in there for numbers of students across each of the tiers and types of activities, you're saying those numbers are for each project?
Each project.
Rather than across the entire bond program?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And so are you, then, is it fair to surmise that on improvements 2013, we had 25 or more students who participated in internships? If I'm reading it correctly? These are to be filled in. We don't have the.
We haven't actually filled those in yet. We, and it's, we need to go back retroactively for 2013.
Oh, so this one is only talking about project objectives. Right. We've gotten to the point where we have the, yeah, but will we, this is new, that we would have these tiers and these metrics and goals, so it would be from now forward.
Right. So in our June update, I would expect we'll have those cells for several of the projects filled in at the different tiers. What the green indicates is that objectives have been established for each of the contracts that exceed $100,000. Recall that the contractual framework for contractors and consultants participating in this program is a function of what's in their contracts, and it describes different opportunities that they have. It describes the requirement to register in our system to get access to our kids through the career counselors.
And so if I'm looking at the Roosevelt High School, and I'm looking at Tier Three, the internships, are we, would I expect to see 25 internships each year of that construction project?
This actually measures the overall duration of the contract. So in the case of interns, Bissetti, architect, is of course the prime architect for that project, their contract extends over four years. So over the duration of four years, the expectation would be they would have.
So they might offer six internships over that entire period.
Over that period of time, correct. Right.
So I would, I would see, well, not over four years. And then we would look at the construction company also offering.
Correct, right. They also have multi-year contracts in place.
Six plus, project management firm.
Many of these firms are also exceeding the requirement of the contracts. Herry International, for example, is going well beyond what's required in their contract to sponsor interns, to speak to just a whole variety of audiences. You saw Tony Vandenberg, who's our deputy program manager with Herry, who was addressing the group, Ken Fisher, the program manager, they spend really significant amount of time with kids.
So thank you very much.
I'm just going to stay here.
You're just going to stay? This is the Jim Owens Show tonight. Okay, so next on our agenda then, thank you very much, Jim, is Franklin High School schematic design. I don't think you need another introduction, but Superintendent Smith?
Debbie Pearson, yes, project manager. And tonight's meeting, the entire meeting, is focused on different aspects of the bond, and this is a preview of the Franklin schematic design that will be back to you next week for a hopeful decision. For a decision, thank you, Ruth.
So two of the stars you just saw in the video at Franklin High School are seated next to me. Debbie Pearson is OSM Project Director for the Franklin Project, and next to her is Karina Ruiz, who's Associate Principal with Dawa IBI Group, and both of these ladies are going to walk us through the schematic design work that they're completing. Would like to lead off, though, just briefly reminding the board that last December, staff presented, and you approved the master plan for the Franklin site, and at the time, we had a lot of conversation around the different features, the educational spaces and the support spaces. spaces and the support spaces, how they fit on the site. So, a lot of the adjacencies, a lot of the framework for the project was developed back in December. Since that time, a lot of work has taken place to look in a more detailed fashion of how the site would be developed in terms of the classrooms, where they sit adjacent to other classrooms, and basically start to lay the framework for connecting our budget, our scope, and our schedules together. And again, as a reminder, schematic design is the place where staff connects those three important metrics together. And so, what we'll be presenting tonight is how that will connect, and then as we move forward with this project. So, with that, Debbie.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the board for the honor of working for PPS on the Franklin High School modernization project. It has been my privilege to guide this project over the last 10 months. Tonight, Karina Ruiz, Associate Principal at Dawa IBI Group, will present the culmination of the schematic design phase. This final design represents the input from thousands of voices of the Franklin community, a community that is passionate about honoring and celebrating the historic facilities on our site, while embracing the challenge to incorporate a design that provides opportunities for 21st century learning for our students. Our Franklin community stands united around this design. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Skanska Construction for their part in arriving at the completion of this phase. As our CMGC partner, Skanska has been instrumental in providing estimates, reconciling those estimates with an outside independent estimator, and working with both PPS and Dawa to bring that reconciled estimate of work into alignment with our budget, while not eliminating any of the program area identified in the educational specifications. Every project is bound by three important components: program, budget, and schedule. You will see tonight a project that is in scope, on budget, and on schedule to be completed in September of 2017. I'd like to note that this presentation includes the additional criteria. We are, however, ready to proceed with either the master plan criteria as presented to you in December, the additional criteria as presented tonight, or something in between should you decide to choose some middle point in that venue. With that said, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Karina Ruiz.
We're used to doing this.
Thank you very much. Again, to echo Debbie's sentiments, it's our pleasure to be here. We have been actively engaged in the Franklin community and have found a really welcome home there between the staff, the students, the teachers, and general community. It's been a pleasure to be out there, working with them every day to bring this project to fruition. And it would, I would be remiss in saying and not including Debbie in that thank you. She's been a great steward for us, and so, we really appreciate your stewardship through this. So, what I thought I'd do tonight is just kind of walk you through the process that we've taken to date in terms of our community engagement from beginning to end, talk about some of where we stand today relative to the area program, and then provide status updates on where the plans are, specifically talking about some of the changes that you will have seen between what we presented at master planning and where we are now in schematic design. And then start to give you some renderings of what those views start to represent. So, without going into a great level of detail, I think when Debbie talked about the fact that this design has been influenced by over 1,000 voices, I don't think that's an exaggeration. We have had numerous meetings, both at Franklin and then in the surrounding communities, to try and build an understanding of what Portland Public Schools is trying to achieve at Franklin, and what the Franklin community wants to get out of that process. So, we've met with individual focus groups, looking at different departmental levels. We've taken folks from the schools and from the design advisory groups out on tours to go and visit a variety of school sites, not only here in Portland, in the metro area, but also in Seattle, to see the work that they've done, to see what we can learn from their examples. And then we've had, again, really deep and engaging conversations with students and staff, which has been, quite frankly, the highlight of the work that we've done. So, as Debbie talked about, the presentation that you see today does have the additional criteria. And essentially, what we designed this around is an assumption that we'd have an average of 7.6 credits per student per year, and that we would have a reduction in the student-teacher ratio. And so, that's the plan that you see before you today. At 1,700 students with this additional criteria, we have approximately 290,000 square feet of gross square feet at Franklin. Almost 25,000 of that is in the career pathways, enhanced electives, and career technical ed. Franklin, as you well know, has a rich history of career technical education, and so, part of our plan is to continue that and build areas where that can thrive at Franklin, while introducing other career pathways that start to introduce students to, whether it's a biomedical field, a culinary arts field, the field of law, or a variety of business and information So, what you see in front of you is the current master plan, or the current plan for the Franklin community, or the New Franklin High School. The primary feature, for those of you that are seeing this for the first time, is that the field has rotated 180 degrees to allow for the adjacency of a PE athletics and sports medicine building, classroom building, directly to the east of that. One change that you'll see between the master plan and this plan is that the master plan had a separate sports medicine facility that was located here. And in part of our value engineering with Skanska, we identified that it would be much more cost-effective to take that same area program and actually add it to this building footprint. So, that's why you no longer see that building there. What you see in the light gray is all of the existing historically significant buildings that we are preserving and rehabilitating. And then addition of a student center, student commons, the CTE Maker Space, and then a new performing arts venue on the corner of 52nd and Woodward. The other primary driving force behind the design was a strong desire to eliminate the vehicle from the center of the campus and return that to the pedestrian and the bike. So, we've moved our primary vehicular access points to the east and the west. Both of these parking lots exist now. We're just improving them and providing drop-off, rather than having that concentrated at the front of the school to, again, try and appease and ameliorate the current conflict that exists between students and cars along Woodward. So, I'm gonna kind of walk you through each of the levels and what we've created. So, primarily in the existing wings, what we've done is returned those to learning neighborhoods. We've taken what were double-loaded corridors, meaning they had classrooms on both sides, and moved one of the walls, removed one of the walls to allow for us to create single-loaded classrooms that then have extended learning areas and small breakout rooms directly adjacent to them, to allow for some of that 21st century learning that we were talking about to extend beyond the walls of the classroom, while still providing the transparency and adjacency that's necessary for supervision. So, this is, sorry, the basement of the west wing, in what is currently the cafeteria on the east wing. We are creating additional classrooms there, as well as the central receiving and storage facility for the school. Then on what is now to be the main level, one of the gestures that we did, if you recall when we came during master plan, we had talked about the idea of creating an atrium that enclosed and provided sort of a student street forward of the historic building. And as we started to have further design conversations with the community and with the state historic preservation office, it really became clear that any addition that we put there was really going to be a little bit insensitive to the historic nature of the building. And for anyone that visits Franklin, you know that the minute you walk in the door, this is Student Street. I mean, they're hanging, it's a tight little space, but they are sitting on every possible surface that they can. And so, what we've done is created a student street in the, right inside the existing main entry, by eliminating the staircase that's here and turning it 90 degrees, and then opening this up to two floors to create an active student commons space, sort of a learning commons. We have another learning neighborhood that kind of matches what we have on the lower level, with three science classrooms and three general education classrooms that would allow for both an academy model and a departmental learning model. We also have classrooms and some of our partner spaces, our early childhood space, and our existing community health clinic. Our admin is still sort of right at the front door, and then extends beyond into the east wing of the main historic building. We are adaptively reusing the existing auditorium and converting that to a library, and taking advantage of the volume of the space there to create a really sort of dynamic, multidimensional library. And adding to the front of that, a new student commons, that's the primary dining facility for the site, as well as the food service kitchen and back-of-house support for that. On the west wing, and you can't unfortunately see it because it's fairly dark, but this is where we have our CTE space, so our Maker Space, and our shops and classrooms that support that. And then, like I said, on the corner of Woodward and 52nd, our fine and performing arts building. And on the second level, you start to see additional classrooms. So, in this case, another learning neighborhood. We have the two- and three-dimensional art. The other thing that you start to notice is that here and here, where the new building is coming into direct adjacency with the existing building, what we've done is we've really peeled away the floor there to allow for that existing exterior historic wall to become a significant interior wall that starts to bridge that transition between old and new, and really starts to gain significance to the historic nature of the facility. So, without going into a lot of redundancy, we have another learning neighborhood here, a series of learning neighborhoods in the existing building, creating what we're calling a brain bar here, which is kind of, if you can imagine, a cross between an Apple Genius Bar and a project lab, a place for student engagement outside and inside of direct instruction. Similar features in the library, more partner space, and then the second floor of the student commons. So, the student dining commons is actually two levels. Then moving on to the separate athletic building that's directly adjacent to the fields, you'll see that we've introduced additional classrooms. So, this is our biomedical pathway. So, we have science classrooms, health classrooms, in direct adjacency with the training facilities for the site. So, this level, which we call Level Negative One, is actually at the field level. The field is about 20 feet lower than the basement of the existing building. So, that allows us to get this at the main level while still kind of preserving the height of the new building. Then what we've done on the main level is where we have our main gym, and concessions and support for that, as well as a culinary arts and classrooms to support that. So, another small learning neighborhood associated with both health and culinary arts. The auxiliary gym looks directly over the main gym and allows for extended seating in, on the main floor. And then, we have another learning neighborhood that occupies half of what would be the fourth floor, as well as space for mechanical. So, what I thought I'd do is walk you through a little bit the renderings that we've created. So, obviously, our driving force from division was to maintain this historic vista of the existing building. By eliminating this building, that separate building, it allowed us to pull that building further away, which again, started to accentuate the historic ends of the building. So, here you will see that the adjacent three-and-a-half-story, four-story building there. This is the view from Woodward, so you can start to see that partly by demolishing all of the historically non-contributing buildings that were currently crowding the building on Woodward, we're able to sort of peel that away and bring the campus back into the grandeur that it had when it was originally built in 1915. And then building sort of on that same premise of symmetry, ensuring that the new commons wing and the new CTE wing had that same level of symmetry with the addition of the fine and performing arts. And then really kind of creating a more collegiate campus sort of approach from the neighborhood. This is the view from, if you're standing, approaching the Performing Arts Center and looking back towards the CTE. So, this is the main building. You'll see, again, that they're linked by that glass link that will have both skylights and artificial light to really kind of have that be the beacon that sort of bridges that old and new. And without getting into too much sort of architectural dialogue, but trying to really create a vocabulary of what we call A-B-C-B-A. So, if you can imagine, this is a bookend that kind of matches the bookend here. The entry matches this entry, and then the body matches the body. So, really trying to take the lines, the historical datums, horizontal datums, and sort of that vocabulary, and ensuring that what we design has sort of that historic contextualism to it. This is the view from the main entry courtyard, looking back towards the addition. So, this is the CTE, the fine and performing arts, and then the existing historic building. And then finally, the view of the gym building from the field. So, we're basically 20 feet down here, and this is the walkway that then links you back to the basement level of the existing building. And I believe that is it. Oh, I take that back, our beacon site. So, this is the new fine and performing arts that's on the corner of 52nd and Woodward. This becomes sort of that reach-out to the community, both with sort of a glass entry promenade here that will allow for student work to be displayed prominently with a black box, and the main theater back here, working your way back to the main part of campus. So, as you, as anyone that's driven past the corner of 52nd and Woodward now and kind of knows that you really can't tell there's a school back there when you make that corner, the hope would be that now that that is definitely a different experience and really reaches out and engages the community. And I believe that is it.
I'd like to entertain any other questions.
Very exciting. Very exciting.
Awesome. It is completely awesome.
Yeah. Questions from board members? Director Regan?
I have a couple of different kinds of questions. First of all, it looks beautiful, so, nice work. I'm not sure I noticed fields, and how many fields we have on the property? Could you just go through that? I know we have the main field. Is there a separate soccer field, baseball field?
There is. There's an existing baseball field on site.
Mm-hmm.
And right now Franklin uses Clinton Park for their softball facilities.
Would that continue, or?
We have, however, made sure to design this in such a way that a softball field could be housed on the.
Can you speak into the microphone?
You gotta go to the microphone. Sorry.
We have this designed, we designed this in a way that a softball field could be installed on the northwest corner of the site opposite the baseball field. So, baseball would be at home, and softball away, or softball at home, baseball away.
Okay.
So, if you wanted to construct that facility, you could.
Great.
And the soccer field, the football field is actually designed as both a soccer field and a football field, which is fairly typical for high schools.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. I wanted to ask more a timing question probably than anything else, which is, I know when we were originally looking to pass the bond, I had meetings with the police bureau at one point, talking with them about it, and I've since had some meetings with the fire bureau. At what point do we bring in some of our public safety experts to kind of take a look at the design and give us some feedback if they have any concerns about too many windows, the height of the windows, or whatever it might be? What stage do we do that? Because it looks beautiful. I just want to make sure it's, that they believe it's a safe structure for them.
So, we've already met with Portland Fire, Portland Police, and we've also met with the district's security and safety officers to look at both access, observation in terms of both closed-circuit television and pathways of travel, and looked at areas that, you know, kind of, what is that datum line that you want to be solid versus transparent?
Yes.
And so, we started to do that at a very schematic level.
Mm-hmm.
I think the approach is that as sort of layers of the onion, as you get into greater levels of detail, you start to examine those with each of these agencies at a greater level of detail. So, right now, we're
So we'll specifically bring in both the fire bureau and our police department to look at the designs before we go too far?
And we have already, yes. We will continue to do so.
Continue to do so.
Okay. Because I know one of the things that happened after the Chapman fire this, September, I think it was, I remember talking to a fire captain who said, God, it would be so helpful if you would put numbers on each classroom, both on the inside of the building and the outside of the building. So instead of somebody calling in and saying, oh, it's Mrs. Buckley's classroom, which means nothing to them, they could say it's classroom 18 or whatever it might be. So, you know, it's those kinds of things that I just want to make sure we're working really closely with both bureaus, and it sounds like you are. So thank you for that. I had a question about the early childhood center. Could you talk about that a little bit more? And who that would house, how it would be housed?
So in the program area, the educational specification that you approved, it included an early childhood learning center of approximately 2,100 square feet. At Franklin High School, they had an educational, an early childhood development program previously, and so they're quite excited about bringing that program back. We have a partner in the building, the school-based health center with Multnomah County Health on the east side of our facility, and so we thought it was a perfect opportunity to be able to combine access to our public at the front of the facility along Woodward. We have the ability to house parking in terms of five minutes stay at the wheel or 15 minute drop off, et cetera. So it was the perfect opportunity to be able to provide that for both a combined CTE pathway for early childhood development, as well as a daycare facility for the community, which is what they had previously, about three years ago.
And would our students have the opportunity to actually have their own kids there? If we have any students with children, is that?
Correct.
Part of the program?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's also a CTE pathway.
Correct. The early childhood development is a CTE pathway.
Ruth?
So this is fantastic. It's so exciting to see this coming to life, and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into each step along the way. And I think regardless of, and I know we're going to have the conversation about the additional criteria later, but whether we go forward with that or with the December approach, it's going to be an amazing, fantastic building for our kids and our communities. So thank you so much. Having said that, while we have the pictures up here, would this be a time to ask you to point out where those additional classrooms with the additional criteria would be, or where they would not be if we decided against that?
Sure. Let's do that. I figured you might ask that.
Yeah.
So I came prepared with what I'm calling sort of my before and after.
Thank you.
So no problem. Uh-oh. Excuse me. So this is the preadditional criteria. So you can see that the gym building here becomes three stories rather than four stories. That's what happens when you add the additional criteria. You can also start to see that there's a little bit of change in this area as well, but the primary additional floor would be at the gym, which would house seven additional classrooms.
So wait, I'm sorry, were those including some general ed as well? Because I thought those were more the PE related and the culinary?
No, those are, the health classrooms and the general education classrooms, which would be in the additional criteria, are on the lower floor and the third floor. So it would be general education classrooms.
Okay, so if we reverted back, it would be back to the PE plus culinary and some health?
Some biomedical, correct.
Biomedical, that's right.
Correct.
Okay.
Then here, this is before and after. So you can again see that even though the massing has changed, what we actually did when we went from the preadditional criteria to the postadditional criteria is slid the performing arts center further to the corner of 52nd and Woodward, that then allowed us to revise the massing to get this more in keeping with sort of that lower mass. So the idea is that in the STEM CTE wing, we would house the additional five classrooms. So that's how we get to the additional 12.
Okay, so I'm sorry, which is the which? This is?
This is, this is pre.
Okay.
And then you'll see the additional criteria on the ones that were designed with the additional criteria in mind. So this is what it would look like after we add the full additional criteria.
So again, it's putting some general ed or whatever, the classrooms within the CTE area?
Correct. On the second floor of the CTE.
Making that area, that chunk of the building larger?
Correct.
To use the technical term.
Yeah.
Do you have the floor plan differences, or is it just drawings? Just curious. No, that's okay.
Not, I can get them. They're on my laptop over there, but I don't currently have them.
I get the idea.
But it's the same, the square footage? I mean, I know there's been a lot of discussion around the square footage of the classroom, as well as the support spaces and the meeting spaces for teachers and so forth.
So the approach that we took to the additional criteria is that it's a general education classroom, but that they would come in learning neighborhoods similar to what we already have in the building. So they bring with them their additional support of extended learning areas, teacher support areas, small instructional areas, and teacher offices, so all of those.
Okay, but the size of the classrooms?
They all still remain at the 900 square feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
If we were to want to go back, if we decided not to do those classrooms now and we wanted to go back, especially in that first area, and add them at some point, is that a possibility?
To the top of the gym?
Yeah.
You certainly could add them anytime in the future. The challenge is that you spend a lot of money and sunk costs upfront to build the foundations and the structure to support that at some point in the future. So the majority of the cost, you're not saving the majority of the cost because you're spending it in all that infrastructure to support some future build out.
So that tells me we would not be able to go back unless we were willing to sink those costs now.
Correct. You have to upsize the structure to take that in the future. Correct.
That's what I was asking.
But I think you're also asking, like at Roosevelt, could you show that as a future addition sometime in the future?
Well, we are doing that already with the 1350 to 1500. I was curious if we have the same option here.
So it'd be similar here, but as was explained, you'd have to incur more cost to do the design for the structure and the foundation to support the added load. So while it would be shown for future, there would be considerably more cost incurred to get us to the point where we could even show that as a future add-on.
So the primary difference between the Franklin phasing, if you will, and Roosevelt is that at Franklin, at Roosevelt, the additional future phases would be in a separate building, whereas what we're talking about here is rather than growing horizontally, we'd grow vertically, which means we have to increase our foundation to allow for that support in the future.
And would there be any option on the Franklin campus of adding a different building to accommodate more classrooms in the future, similar to what we're looking at at Roosevelt?
It's a pretty dense site, and we also have some pretty soft soils. So the locations that we could possibly put buildings on, it really doesn't make sense to do that. So I think our team's approach is that, no, there isn't really another place on site to add those in the future.
Just to follow up. I get the sunk cost for the added capacity on top, but it'd still be a cost savings too. So can you estimate what it would be?
I cannot.
No? Back in the envelope, Jim?
But really, we wouldn't want to venture, I guess. We could easily come up with that and share that later.
We'd engage our contractor.
We could do it quickly, but I'm not really hesitant to even take a stab at it.
Yeah. And then I guess I have a question for superintendent. Yes, last meeting, Bobby asked, so we're clearly in a tight space here, and so the must haves versus nice to have. And I'm wondering about a preschool in our high school. Is that a must have?
That was one of the things that we had in our educational specifications, so for all of our campuses. So it's one of the things we defined as a feature of our high schools.
That we approved too?
No, I understand that. Now we're in a situation where we have to look at cutting back.
And similarly, so yes, and you're going to end up in more of a trade-off conversation in a moment, but like all of the things that are in there right now are part of what we had in our ed specs. Yeah.
Yeah. And so what's the, so we've approved it as a board, but what is the rationale of a preschool in our high schools?
So what you just heard described, it's both a.
So the CTE pathway?
It's CTE.
That's the driver?
It's CTE, it's a service in the community, and it's a service to our students who have children.
To keep them in high school?
Yeah, all three.
And would that space be rented out? We'd receive income from it?
I can tell you from the Franklin model, it wasn't rented out, but it was a money-making venture in that, from a CTE perspective, what it provided for the students at Franklin High School was not only learning about early childhood development, but also business marketing, business management and marketing. And so they actually marketed that daycare facility and had income coming in as a result of the daycare in addition to the CTE pathways, and they had a positive cash flow every year in their daycare facility, which they were quite proud of.
So in other words, it was operated by us and not by an outside vendor?
Correct, correct.
But it brought in income?
Correct.
It's actually, the space is part of our wraparound services, and in our ed spec, we had 4,700 square feet, so this is a little less than half of it. But it's in that category, and it's in a tier that we've said is something we want to include in all of our comprehensives. So the way it's currently configured, both Roosevelt and Franklin are addressing this in a similar way.
Interesting. Other questions? Steve?
Why don't we move the preschool over to Atkinson? It's right there on the same site, and they already have rooms, and then we could use those two rooms for classrooms and save money building other classrooms.
We certainly could explore other opportunities.
That would make sense to me.
The way it was, what we're trying to do is align with our approved ed spec, which makes us a programmatic element in this project. However, could we look at it? Certainly, certainly could explore other opportunities.
What happened up along?
We've got classrooms up along here right now. There's classrooms on both sides of that wall right now, correct?
It's a double loaded corridor.
In the existing building, there are classrooms on both sides of a central hallway, correct?
On that, on that side, there's existing classrooms?
So this is the existing building here. This is all new, same thing here.
Okay.
This is the existing auditorium, but in the existing classroom wing, what you have is a corridor that goes down the center of the site, and then narrow, small classrooms on either side of that, that are anywhere from 450, so about half the size of what you're currently programming to, to about 600. So what you're.
So now that's what they have?
That's about, that's what they have now.
Do they use those classrooms?
Yep. They currently use those classrooms, yes.
Why didn't we just build onto those classrooms and save money?
Part of the concern with adding, doubling the square footage within the existing footprint is you start to create bowling alleys that aren't really conducive to sort of the 21st century learning model, because if you're bound by the two walls of the corridor, you can only go longer, which means you'd actually end up with half the amount of classrooms if you still went to that 900 square foot model.
Can't you expand those classrooms out that way?
We can't expand it this way because we'd grow outside of the existing building, right?
I don't know. You're the architect.
Yes. Well, I'm telling you, we cannot grow, we cannot go. Right now, the historic envelope is.
You've got classrooms there, but you can't use them? Is that what you're saying, any longer, but they're using them now?
In order for them to align with the ed spec, which is double the amount of square footage, we couldn't use the same space to do that.
But that was because of the ed specs, not because you couldn't use the same space? We could change the ed spec, and you could use that same space as classrooms and save money, and you, just all you would lose is the supposed 21st century area there?
I think you would lose both the 21st century and also the fact that they're currently overcrowded in their existing spaces.
They're really tight spaces.
So how many people would, can you take in that? Isn't the 21st century basically tied to those classrooms?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, the whole point of the 21st century is because you can have small areas outside of those classrooms, right?
It's a combination of increasing the square footage offerings within the classroom to provide for more flexible learning, both within the traditional classroom walls, and then providing for extended, small group and individual group or individual work outside of the classroom in the extended learning spaces. It's the tandem of the two that is the 21st century.
So if you kept those classrooms, you could actually use those for smaller classrooms, right? In other words, you could take care of a lot more students than you can in what's designed there.
Yeah, we actually went and did a model where we looked at preserving the existing classrooms and still trying to get the additional square footage, and we weren't able to optimize that to provide additional classrooms. It still ended up being, because of the requirements of the existing building, about the same. If you still try to achieve the ed spec requirement for size, if you say we're just going to build back what they have now, then obviously you could have more of those because they're smaller, right?
With less expense? And were there classrooms that are being taken out on the other side too?
No, that's existing.
I mean, is there any place else that there's classrooms being demolished?
There's reconfiguration of space upstairs. It's still a bit of a double loaded corridor here, and then that's, those are primarily the spaces that have classrooms. The cafeteria and auditorium in the east wing are being repurposed for additional classroom space and library spaces.
What's in the back corner on this side?
Here?
On the other side, come across, right in, now move your light just to the right down and to the up.
Here?
Right here. What's right here? Right there. You're talking about having you build up?
So at some point, your property ends here, because your property kind of comes around like this. And so there is an existing single story building that kind of, is kind of a really sort of amorphous shape that does this, and then there's an existing shop building that's here. But really, this is just drive, and your property ends about right here.
So if you have those two classrooms that are sitting right there? The two that are right next to that area, the top two right there?
The red ones?
Down below the red one, on the left.
There's four of them.
Right here?
Just right here?
Yes, those are classrooms on the second floor, however.
Those are on the second floor?
Yes.
On the first floor?
The shops.
Shops.
This space is wetting the gate.
That is your, so let me go back to your site. That is your parking lot, directly adjacent to the building. So you'll see, there's no place to build, everything that's in the light gray here would be sidewalk, so there's no place to build that while still providing access to the site for parking and vehicular access.
And Ms. Pearson said we were on budget, but that was prior to the 12 classrooms.
We actually are on budget, whether you decide to go back to the master plan, whether you decide to do the full additional criteria based on the options afforded you for funding that, or whether you decide to go to some middle ground. We have all three options designed and estimated, along with Skanska Construction and the independent estimator with Dawa and Reconciled. So we're prepared to move in any direction you choose to go.
But you're only on budget prior to the 12 classrooms, adding the 12 classrooms?
Based on the master plan.
I'm asking what I'm asking. I'm asking what I'm asking, and I think they do it. Well, go ahead, but I don't know, I don't think I need it. I think they understand what I'm saying. Now, we're on budget without 12 classrooms. Are we on budget with the 12 classrooms? Answer's no. We're over budget, and I'd like to know how much money that takes out of, say, the, how much money that takes out of the.
Go ahead.
Thank you. How much money does that take out of the seismic stuff? Those 12 classrooms take exactly how much money out of the seismic that wouldn't go into seismic, that would bracket that out?
I can appreciate your question, and I'd just like to note that there's another agenda item at the end of this that talks about the additional criteria, and we're fully prepared to talk to you about all of those options and all of the costs at that time under that agenda item as opposed to.
Okay, I can hold my question to.
agenda item at the end of this that talks about the additional criteria. And we're fully prepared to talk to you about all of those options and all of the costs at that time under that agenda item as opposed to the Franklin-
Okay. I can hold my question to then. That's no problem. Sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby?
Go back to the picture that showed the, I think you called it an apple genius bar.
The brain bar?
Was that in, was that in the original ed spec? And does every school have something like that? Could you explain to me what that area is?
I'd love to explain that to you. As, when the educational specification was provided, there was information in terms of what was in the program to be provided at every school. And there was some leeway within that program for each of the schools to be able to determine what was important to their community. So, in Franklin High School, the CTE career pathways and technology-related programs were important to their community. So, we took square footage, a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit here, a little bit there, and combined that in a way that provided for this brain bar. The brain bar is envisioned to be an adjunct, if you will, to the media center. Where the media center has a computer classroom in it and it provides opportunities for project-based learning, the brain bar provides a multitude of technology-related learning from individual, sitting one-to-one with a computer, to long-distance learning, small learning environment with six to eight kids in a long-distance learning, say, with a college across the United States, to this genius bar-type atmosphere where they would be able to have a technology person, staff member, in this brain bar who could help kids on a number of different levels, whether it's talking about applications that they can get on their iPads, to different ways to marry their curriculum with different applications. So, at Franklin, they said, "This is something that's important. We want to try to find a way to have this type of learning environment, technology embedded in our facility."
How many square feet is that?
Pardon me?
How many square feet?
It's about eighteen hundred, two classrooms.
So, I guess I would say that we're also hearing that what's important to the community is adding additional classroom space. And if this wasn't something that was specifically in the master plan, I think it's an area that we should potentially look at as two additional classrooms. So, I, I mean, I understand that it's important to the community, but I'm also understanding that additional classroom space is important to the community. So, I guess I would offer that this could potentially be an area that we could or should look at.
I actually, I actually like the idea. I think it's very modern-
I totally love the idea.
And provides for project learning. I think it's a fabulous idea and hooray for the neighborhood, for the community.
The other thing that I would like to note, just for conversation, is that this program that you see before you matches the ed spec. So, while the ed spec says that we should have thirty-three general ed classrooms in our standard facility, we have thirty-three general ed classrooms and the brain bar. So, we've done the work at Franklin to maintain the program while providing other opportunities.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciate, I mean, that's a flexible learning space, again, that can be used for all types of different learning experiences. And so, I mean, again, this is a fabulous plan, whether or not we do the additional criteria. Either way, it's going to be an outstanding facility. It reflects the ed specs, the input from us, from the community. And at this point, we need to move forward. We need to say, "This is it," and start buildings, moving toward building because we're up against the schedule. So, we could have individual tweaks we would want to continue to make for any number of aspects of this. And I respect that and understand that totally. But we need to approve either one way or the other. And we'll have that full discussion in a little bit and then move forward because you need this schematic design approved next week. So, I'm just putting that as the, as the marker for what we need to, what we need to accomplish here.
Steve?
If the ed spec said thirty-three general ed classrooms, then how many other learning spaces are there in the building on top of those thirty-three general ed classrooms? Which would have, if you took an average of even thirty kids per classroom. So, you got, what, you got a couple places in the jam?
There, there are-
I mean, how do we get, I'm kind of curious about, sorry to interrupt you, how we got in this hole that we're in where we have to go look and say, "We got to add twelve more classrooms to the ed specs." How did we get there?
The additional classroom criteria was based on opportunities for kids. So, when we look at what's in your board packet that talks about the additional criteria, it's about offering, not the six credits per student, but something greater, like seven-point-six credits per unit, and at the same time, trying to reduce the student-to-teacher ratio. That's what creates more staff in the building, is to provide those opportunities for students.
So, we just didn't understand that when we first started putting this building together? Is that, is that how we did it?
When you passed the bond, there were some parametric estimates or assumptions made. So, part of the original ed spec, as you know, says thirty square feet per student and nine hundred square foot classroom. That means thirty students in each classroom. When you start talking about opportunities for kids and reducing the student-teacher ratio, you start to drop that number below that. And I think, as we commented early on, it's about those thousands of voices that have had an opportunity to speak since the bond passed. I think both the board and the administrators and OSM, everybody understands through all of those voices that there are greater opportunities that we're trying to find for our kids. And that's what the additional criteria is about.
If you went back to my original question, which was thirty-three general ed classrooms, how many other learning spaces were there in the, within the building at the time? Let's say you have second period where you pretty much filled up because you have some kids that don't come first. But second period, you have three hundred and-
Right.
You have enough room for nine hundred and ninety kids in your general ed. And we were building for how many kids?
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred, so we need room for seven hundred more kids someplace?
So, so the original criteria, the seventeen hundred criteria envisioned thirty-three general ed classrooms and another fourteen classrooms that were associated with the gymnasium. There were four in the gymnasium, six, or three in the CTE, six in the performing arts center-
Science.
And eleven in the science classroom. So, we have a total of forty-seven eleven, fifty-eight teaching stations, total, thirty-three of which were the general ed classrooms.
That's seventeen hundred and forty kids of its thirty apiece?
Correct.
It's also worth pointing out that the bond was framed based on a fifteen-hundred student capacity for Franklin. And so, during, for master plan that you approved, went up to seventeen hundred. So, that was the first scope change. This additional criteria represents a connected scope change based on how they described it.
Thank you very much.
So, first of all, this is- Fantastic. Sitting here as a student, I can say the only thing that matches my excitement, I think, is my envy. So, it's really fantastic. So, thank you for your work. I had a couple of questions. And one was with the learning center design. Was that at all coordinated with the advanced scholars program at Franklin?
The early childhood learnings that we're talking about?
The learning center, the general area up there, yeah. Yeah, the genius bar.
Yes, yes, that was.
Okay, it was? All right, great. Fantastic. And also, when I was looking at the design at the outside, it seemed like there were a lot of entrances and exits. That's all been cleared by our safety professionals? Okay.
So, one of the conversations we had, actually, with both fire and the district safety administrator, or the district safety folks, is while there are, there's an entrance here, there's an entrance here, there's an entrance here, and there are a couple of entrances here, those would be locked down after school starts, in which case, all of these doors would basically have no access to them from the exterior, with the exception of the main entry.
Okay. All right, great. And also, I was looking at the floor plan. I was curious if there was a reasoning to not having the wraparound services area near the counseling area and student comments. Was there a reason for that?
I think, as Debbie talked about earlier, the primary goal was to try and get that, so we wanted to kind of concentrate student services here. The idea was that this building could kind of function for their sun and step-up programs or alter, so they, there are some community service providers that are in this part of the building. But really, the community health clinic exists here and was fairly recently modernized. So, we don't actually anticipate making any changes to that scope of work because it was done maybe three or four years ago and is in really good shape. And so, the idea was to kind of create a similar bookend to that here and allow for that immediate access to parking here that would allow them to, basically, not have to get into the heart of the campus, but really kind of keep the community in those spaces that are directly adjacent to them.
Great, thank you.
I've had the opportunity to get to sit on the design advisor group for this, this project. And I just want to say again, congratulations, both to the community and to the professionals that are working on this. There have been hours spent on moving this from there to here, and what if we do this, and lots of different filters that people bring to it. And the architects and Debbie have been fantastic, really spending hours with teachers, spending hours, I think of Steve Matthews and Shay James-
Yes.
Like, just hours and hours of crawling, walking over, checking, running schedules, checking this. So, and I just want to thank you all and them for that. And I really appreciate that, and we get to talk about this a little bit later, about coming up with three, three different options that we have ahead of us, so that we can actually begin to try to figure out which pieces, while we try to also still figure out how we find ourselves on time, on budget. And I appreciate, again, the, a little bit what Director Buell's trying to say is, "How could we build additional classrooms?" At least what I hear him saying. "How could we build additional classrooms and still be on budget?" What you're saying is that if we approve a different budget-
Right.
The design will meet that budget. So, to his point that we wouldn't be on the original budget, otherwise, this would be, we wouldn't be having much of a discussion. So, thank you. And thank you, Jim and CJ. I know she's not here with us tonight because these are very complex issues. And to be able to have an answer from everything, from fire and police, to why we decided to place the early childhood where it is, to why we can't push out. I was waiting for actually somebody to suggest that we use eminent domain on a couple of houses over there to see if we couldn't add a couple of classrooms, which I'm glad that we didn't have to, have to suggest.
We had a meeting with them last Thursday, so I also appreciate that.
And recognizing that there are some creative things. So, for example, I don't remember if it's Taggart up there, bringing, bringing folks on, which will be a, a traffic flow change for the neighborhood. So, reaching out and being proactive with them to try to figure, figure ways that we can mitigate it. It's just, it's a really exciting project and everybody I see, I think, matches Andrew's comments about how really exciting it is. I'm getting emails, actually, from across the country, of people who graduated from PPS and are really excited about this project. So, thank you.
Appreciate the comment on behalf of all of OSM and our extended team.
Well, thank you to all of you. And thank you also to the members of the Franklin community who helped you all put all this together, the members of the DAG, in addition to Director Belile. So, really appreciate you being here tonight. Lots of work. So, thank you.
And to Steve Matthews, who has attended every meeting we have had.
All right. Okay, thanks so much. Okay, we're going to move on to, I thought it was bond market adjustment. Going to do that? And actually, we're going to kind of tee up the next three things. Okay. And then the additional high school-
And actually, I'm going to ask Debbie and Karina if you'll just stay, stay tuned, like, stay nearby because we may need to pull you back up during this next conversation. And Jim, stay put. But I'm actually going to ask Tom Peterson, who's a member of the Bond Accountability Committee, to come on up. So, at May nineteenth meeting, we began the discussion, or the board started the discussion about the additional criteria that have been discussed here tonight, where we were looking at proposing to add those to the educational, amending the educational specifications for all of the high schools based on this additional criteria. We started that discussion. We heard from the Bond Accountability Committee, they had not yet been fully briefed on the details of both the additional criteria and also the bond market adjustment. We then met in briefings for several members, a number of members of the Bond Accountability Committee on Friday. Numbers of board members got to sit in on that briefing and got some clarity in both separating out the issues that had to do with the educational specifications and the ones that had to do with bond market adjustments. So, I wanted to let Tom share some of his reflections, then, from that briefing. Then, we'll go through and do in detail what's included in the bond market adjustment alignment conversation. And then separately, the additional criteria consideration that we've been talking about here. So, three different features to really increase understanding of what those three things are. So, first, Tom, thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thanks. Actually, I'm here on behalf of Kevin because he's on vacation. I think he's on a cruise or something. So, but in any case, I want to also thank the staff for taking the time to fit us in and get that briefing. I know we kind of stirred the pot up a little bit last week, but we, we honestly didn't really understand how this was going to work. And now that we've had that opportunity, I think we have a better understanding of how this works. I think you may have all received a memo from Kevin, so I'm not going to read all that to you. We, we, only four of us were able to be briefed. We weren't able to kind of, you know, deliberate on anything. So, what you're hearing tonight are my comments and Kevin's comments. Pardon me?
I'm sorry. I think there's another member of your committee back there.
Louis Fonten.
Do you want to join me? I didn't see you was here.
It's okay.
He didn't say you were coming.
Where's, where's the hot seat? Get him in there.
So, I'll let you add your two cents. So, quick, just, well, thanks for coming.
Go ahead and introduce, go ahead and introduce yourself for the-
Yes, I'm Louis Fonten. I'm a member of the Bond Accountability Committee.
Thank you.
And you were briefed?
No, I was briefed.
Okay, so we both have been briefed. In any case, I think, at least from Kevin and my perspective, I think we understand it. And I, and where we had some questions and concerns relating to the cost, I think we're satisfied that the staff and the team did a, is a very good effort at trying to really control the cost, to do a fairly extensive VE session, to get the numbers down to an acceptable level. And when you adjust the numbers for inflation, they're pretty close to the cost per square foot for this current scope, which includes the added criteria. So, I don't think we have a situation where we've got a, you know, cost of, significant cost over one. What we have is a situation where we have more scope, it's going to cost more, and, you know, now we need to figure out how you're going to, to fund that. You know, there's still adequate contingency. We're satisfied with that. I think some of the concerns about the escalation, how we're using escalation, were answered and that seems appropriate. So, the, so I think it's fair to say that the, the difference that you've heard earlier is really going to have to come from the other IP projects, that you're going to have to decide whether or not you delete those or not. And that's certainly your call. So, with that, we're satisfied, at least for Franklin, we're assuming that the Roosevelt and based on the methodology for grant, that those are probably reasonable assumptions. So, that the budget increase at this time is pretty reasonable for what's been added to the scope. I would also like to do a kind of a shout-out for the staff. They've done a great job. Jim and Debbie and the team have done a great job. And just unfortunate, we hadn't had a chance to get briefed last week. So, that's all I have to add. Louis?
Yes, and I, I concur that from a design and construction and budgetary point of view, I agree with, with everything that's been said. And so, it really does come down to whether the added scope is, is going to be done. And these are my comments, my comments alone. I believe that adding the scope changes what was promised to the voters. And it's my duty to say that we need to stay with what was promised, go to bond two, then add the scope for these classrooms, for these, for these buildings. It can be done. It will be expensive. The design may change. But I, I think that if we change the scope now and we don't do the IP program, that there may not be a bond number two because there's a, this is Portland. We need to trust our officials, our boards, our city governments, our governmental officials. And if that's lost, then when's the next time that that can be gained back? And when's the next time that we will get another bond passed? It's hard enough getting this one passed. So, you've got a tough decision.
If I could add two more things I forgot to mention, and it's kind of gets to Louis's point, you really need to get a decision made quickly, because you are jeopardizing the ability to deliver the high schools now, as scheduled, so you are in a tough spot. So, I would encourage you to make the call, as hard as it's going to be, so the project teams continue on down the path, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from, questions from board members? None? Great.
Yeah.
Tom?
Yeah, so, just to engage you a little bit, so it seems like, from my point of view, the bond was designed, we made a mistake, and we designed these high schools for a minimum credits to graduate, as opposed to allowing students to go beyond that. And so, in your view, is it, is it not right to say, to fix that mistake?
What are all the alternatives to fix the mistake? What happens if you extend the class a day by an hour on either way? Can you get in more classrooms, more classes that way? Are there other alternatives than just structural alternatives, building? You know, is there different programming models that can be used, so that we can get in all the number of classes that need to be done? And so, I'd...
Right, so making sure that we look at all those.
Can you change the boundaries? So, you have pure choice, if you were students in the school.
Bobby?
I just want to express how grateful I am that you raised the questions that you raised last week, and that's why we have a Bond Accountability Committee, and you all are experts, and I really appreciate that you helped us pause, and to really have a much more intentional discussion about the scope, so I'm very grateful to you.
Welcome.
Great. Thank you, both of you, Tom, Louis, really appreciate your help, and to Kevin also, wherever he may be cruising. Appreciate it.
He's on his way to Alaska.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so part of what the conversation on Friday during the brief, both last, at the last board meeting and the conversation during the briefing, the board then requested multiple potential scenarios of how we could, could either not address the additional criteria, address the additional criteria fully, what the trade offs are in each of those, so what are other non-capital kinds of solutions? And, and the request was to find two midpoint solutions that would allow us to potentially do some of the additional criteria, and fulfill the number of schools in particular, the maximum number of schools in the summer project work, prioritizing seismic, which is the place that we've really heard significant concern. So, what Jim will walk you through, first, actually, we'll be looking at the bond market adjustment alignment, and then secondly, we'll walk through what your potential scenarios are for considering the additional criteria and the relationship to the IP work. So, Jim?
Right, so continuing on to the next two topics that are in sequence, as the superintendent mentioned, this one is a, is a short update that relates to the comments from Tom Peterson and Louis Fonten, relative to the Bond Accountability Committee, and I also would like to applaud their effort in understanding this fairly complex issue, and working with us to have a sense of the puts and takes, if you will, that are resulting from, from this discussion. So, very much appreciate their, their comments tonight. So, in your board packets, you have a, a short one-page memo, it's an informational report that describes how staff interprets use of a bond funding component that was entitled escalation. And escalation, as you may recall, is really a consortium of market factors that are occurring, inflation factors, impacts from labor wage changes, bully changes, just a whole series of items that we anticipated over the duration of a year program that we would need to tap into. So, when the project budgets were developed, the escalation, it began as a $45 million line item, when the voters approved the bond. So, staff has been allocating escalation based on inflation factors that we know about. What the memo attempts to convey is what we, and I believe the Bond Accountability Committee are in agreement on, is the use of the escalation dollars to apply to the high schools for the, we're calling it the schematic design, market adjustment, for the work that the project teams did in implementing the approved master plan. So, with your approval at schematic of use of bond program reserve, or board reserve, if you will, that was the scope change. The market adjustment represents use of the escalation category to support the project. So, when we characterize Franklin and Roosevelt and the other projects, it's important to recognize that from the onset, we expected that escalation would be applied to the projects over the duration of their, of their life cycles. We did establish a protocol that, once we determined what the construction schedule was, we projected to midpoint of construction, and then we allocated accordingly. This is an opportunity for Franklin, based on the work that the team has done there, to, to look at what the allocation should be. So, the memo really summarizes that, and it describes not only how we would view this for Franklin, but also how it's been used to support the improvement projects, that we applied it for 2013, 2014, the 2015 IP, also for the Fabian project, lest we not forget, that escalation is also being used on that. So, before we go into the next topic on the additional criteria, we'd like to invite any questions on use of escalation that you may have.
Are you still looking at 18 million? Was that 18 million?
Across all the three high schools?
Right.
For use of escalation? It's actually, it's a little higher than that, but let me pull my notes.
It was 9.6 for each one.
What about 36 altogether, and 18 was?
So, right about 20 million.
Pardon?
Right about 20 million for escalation.
For all three?
Other questions?
For all three, correct. And it's a good point that Grant is being captured in this protocol as well, because Grant's several years out, but we wanted to ensure that the resources are being allocated correctly to Grant, as well as the other projects.
And again, just to clarify, escalation refers to the increase in the cost of the materials, and it's not, it's separate from the issue of whether we would increase our scope?
Correct.
And so forth, it's what it costs in order to build the buildings.
The, the scope changes, and as we go into the additional criteria, I'll characterize that differently.
Right.
As relating to scope, just as I did when we went from the 1,500 student capacity to the 1,700, that represents...
Right, and there's additional money in terms of the contingency. I mean, it was just really helpful to hear the, the experts on the Bond Accountability Committee kind of quiz you about all the different pieces that they're so familiar with, and you are as professionals, that there's all these different contingencies built in, and they all have separate technical names, but there's different, just the checks and balances, and the conservative way that you've approached this, regardless of whether we do the December approach or the additional criteria, so really appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Tom?
Thank you. So, I just had a quick clarification, because the, the four things that you talked about seem redone it to me, but they're probably not, so. One is labor market bully changes, and then cost per square foot of construction increases?
Right.
And then increased cost of construction materials, so isn't that built in the cost of, of the square foot? And then alignment, cost of work with PBS Construction Design Guidelines, I don't know what that stands for. So, could you just explain how these are distinct?
Okay.
And what they are?
Great, great question, Greg Curler, and I would say that there is a certain amount of overlap across these, but our wage scale, as a public agency, is we pay prevailing wage rate, and that changes as we move forward in time, and we call them the bully rates. So, we have to take bully rates as they change into account, as we look at what the, what the costs are. The project team, specifically the work that, that Dawa and Skanska and their independent estimator, they take that into account. It does manifest into the cost per square foot, however, as you mentioned, so the cost for increased labor is part of the increase to the, I think, $236 a square foot for our building hard cost. Material costs are also embedded in that, but oftentimes, there's a certain expectation of, of the cost of steel, and concrete, and fuel, and how that changes, so again, the project team takes that into account as they, as they move forward. The last item you mentioned are the district's construction design guidelines, and that's, that's the, the criteria that the district uses with design professionals to describe what it is that's important to us in terms of different building systems, like heating, ventilating, air conditioning systems. There's a separate division in our guide specs that relates to what type of system we have, it connects to our lead criteria that we established, it connects to the quality requirements that, that we try to establish, and then the design team takes that into account. Oftentimes, as a result, just as they take into account our head spec, our design guidelines also will reflect a cost impact that is part of this market adjustment as well, and so we believe that that's consistent for the use of escalation.
And so, this market adjustment that you're, that you're making is, is the out, I mean, you're estimating it out until the end of the program, till all these high schools are built, is that correct?
Actually, we estimate to the midpoint of construction, so the construction period for Franklin is approximately 26 months, I think, and so, with construction starting in June of 2015, basically, June of 2016 is what we projected to be the midpoint, and so, the allocation or the, the escalation, the escalated amount, the market adjustment, was calculated by the project team through that period.
And so, then how do you do that with Grant, that won't even be in, in construction by then?
Grant, Grant was, was a little more difficult, but we identified an amount, you know, based on what we are expecting to see at this point in time, for what, what factors will occur. I would say, very candidly, because Grant's out two years, there likely will be more unknowns for Grant. I think it's important to recognize that one of the program contingency categories, the program reserve, board reserve, if you will, we still are not recommending taking more than the half that's already been allocated, the 10 million, so that 10 million, I guess in my experience, would be something we would need to, to keep in place, just to support any changes in, in Grant that went above and beyond what we were assuming now.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up? Since you brought up the $10 million that we already approved?
I had meant to ask you this earlier, this is under your staff recommendation for Franklin High School full modernization. Under budget and resource implications, you talked about that $10 million, and then, so you said the board approved resolution number 4840, which allocated approximately $10 million from bond program reserve to support all three high school projects, and then you say, staff is requesting that approximately $5 million, or half of that, be allocated specifically to the Franklin project. So, I was surprised that we would have half of it, that obviously doesn't leave equivalent amounts for Grant and Roosevelt. Can you just walk me through that real quick? I know this is a little bit off subject, but it...
Okay. The, the resolution that identified the, the 10 million was correctly, as you stated, to be applied to all three of the comprehensive high schools in the bond. The reason it's a, it's a different amount for the three is, has to go back to the, the way the bond was structured. Franklin in the bond started out as, at a certain size, we used in our parametric or our conceptual estimates, we, we used the larger of a student factor times capacity to come up with the size. Franklin started out as a 240,000 square foot full modernization project, that's actually larger than the existing size of Franklin right now. The one at the other end was Grant High School, which went with a larger amount of, of square footage. So, the need to adjust with the program reserve to bring Grant down to the same size as Franklin resulted in it having a negative allocation. So, between Franklin and Roosevelt, we saw a, a net add in terms of that, but we saw a net deduct, or a deduct for Grant High School.
Okay, I had noticed that also, I was going to ask about that, so that's helpful.
Okay. It's, it's an attempt to, to level, you know, we, we talk in terms of facility parity, but connecting the three high schools to our head spec program is what that was an effort to accomplish, and we actually walked through that with the Bond Accountability Committee sometime back, so to explain all that.
Any other questions? Steve?
Did you, you said that Franklin is smaller now?
Franklin...
Under the head specs, it's smaller than is now?
Where, where it began in the bond, when it was a 1,500 student capacity, when it went to the 1,700 size, it, it increased, and with additional criteria, it increased again. So, currently, with the full additional criteria, it's about 20% larger than what, than what it was originally.
I understood what you said, thank you.
Lewis?
Okay, thank you.
Are you ready to move on?
Yep, so now we'll move on to talk about the additional criteria, and the various options, and what they mean in terms of trade offs, so, Jim?
Okay, so, this is our, I think this is our last topic tonight, and it pertains to the item that we've been discussing at several points tonight, on the additional high school criteria. This actually began back in, on June or May 12th, when CJ Sylvester made a presentation on it, we subsequently discussed it last Monday, the 19th, and the way it was described, and again, you have a memo in your packets, that summarized the additional criteria in an informational report format. The criteria, and I don't know how deep it has needed to take into it, but how we established the additional criteria is, is really driven based on student-driven values, wanting to provide students greater opportunity for more credits, really to go to the 30.4 credits for graduation standard, and we're on a trajectory to get to that. We also are supplementing, through this additional criteria, the use of our classrooms, our gen ed classrooms, which is 100%, and being able to configure in such a way that we can make that more palatable to the teachers. We're also trying to reduce the student-to-teacher ratios, which again, is another student-driven value aspect. So, with those, with those, those particular characteristics of the additional criteria, we applied that to, to Franklin, and we've also applied it to Roosevelt, which we'll be talking about as well. And we identified several different options that we might look at. What this slide projects is starting to bring into the discussion the, the use of the improvement projects, which in the bond measure, talked about up to 63 schools. And what's important to recognize here is, the way the bond was structured, we were looking at roofing, seismic, ADA, which included elevators, middle-grade science classroom improvements, doing that over the eight-year timeframe, and it was a staff construct to bundle those into consecutive summer programs, hence the IP program. So, part of the exchange in terms of funding the additional criteria has to include a conversation around the IP work. So, in terms of options that we wanted to review with you tonight, we've identified three. And the first option that you have here, we would refer to as the no-change option, and by no change, no change from the, the master plan, that was approved for both Franklin and Roosevelt back in December of 2013. And some of the characteristics of that, if you will, are pros and cons, which is actually how the memo is formatted that you have, I'll try to simplify it here perhaps, but identifying that with the additional criteria around the 30.4 credits and the number of classrooms, if you take the master plan and then you apply that, it basically results in a significant reduction in student capacity. It actually brings it down below where we began the bond with, which was 1,500, brings it down to 1,250. it down to, to 1,250. This particular option requires boundary changes. The improvement projects under this option remain intact, meaning that all 63 of the schools, we would be able to, we would be able to address. The ed specs are revised for schools and would need to be revised in later bonds to accommodate the larger student populations.
Excuse me, Jim, is this in our memo? I don't, I don't see this in our memo. Option one, am I missing a page?
You have in your memo-
Our option one is different than what that is.
Okay. In, in your memo, I think it describes, I don't have it handy, but it would-
One, the, number one is approve the additional criteria and retain 1,700 student capacity.
That's option three on this, on his slides.
Number one is number three?
Number one is number three on the slides, I think.
Okay, so, so this would be option, option one on, on the, on the screen is actually option three.
But it's still, option three still says retain 1,700 students.
There you go, there's option-
Right, okay, okay.
They all have 1,700 students in them.
Well, no, actually, option one, with the, with the additional criteria logic, would actually drop, drop us to 1,250. Under option two, would actually bring us to 1,500, which was the original language in the bond. And then option three, which adds all of the additional criteria, would bring us to 1,700 students.
And actually, you know what? So, they've got an option in here, I'll tell you why the, what the difference is. Go back to option one, Jim, if you flip back up to option one. So, the other one is, the other variation on this one is 1,700 students taking six classes. This one is 1,250 students taking the 7.6 classes. So, you are either varying the number of students served in the building, or you're varying the number of courses available. It's two variations on this option.
This is a totally different way of looking at it than we've been talking about before, so it's a little confusing.
It, it is, and it's, but it's two different variations on a theme, that either you're varying the number of students served in the building, or you're varying the amount of program available to them. But, and the no-change refers to no change to the building plan.
Is there an option that has the 1,700 students, just stopping where we have been, what we've been doing prior to the time we started to add additional criteria? Do we have that option?
That's, that's option one, but would be as a lesser-
Option one would be-
Yeah.
But the-
Without the additional criteria, that, that jumps it up to 1,700 students.
Right.
Thank you.
1,700 students taking six classes, yeah.
And then, of course, the, one of the other aspects of this option is the, students would be limited number of classes, basically the six periods, and then no additional teachers. If you think of capacity in terms of space, it doesn't directly connect with teachers, but when you think in terms of the number of teachers in the school, there needs to be a connection. So, with this particular option, the ability to put more teachers in the, in the school would be compromised to a certain extent. The next option is sort of a in-between, the full criteria and the, and the no-change. And the, half the additional criteria, in the case of Franklin, means five additional classrooms and associated space from what was approved in the master plan. And with the additional criteria there that bring us to 1,500 students, unlike option one, there likely would be boundary changes, but perhaps not to the same extent. And then, in this instance, of the 63 schools in the IP projects, all but one would be completed. And the one is, is a big one, it's the, the re-roofing of Cleveland High School.
So, can I ask, in that option two, does that assume that all summer IP work at 62, or does that assume just focusing on seismic and not doing the ADA elevators?
Great, great question. Relative to the scopes, of course, with the 63 schools, there's various combinations of work scopes that are included in each one of them. So, this, this focuses on the, the roof and the seismic components. So, in most instances, the schools that haven't already, IP 13, IP 14, IP 15, would not get the, would not get the ADA or the, or the elevator work, or some of the smaller seismic work that's not related structurally. However, it would include all of the middle-grade science classrooms, which currently are planned to complete by the end of summer 2016.
I have a question on this. So, is option two, 1,500 students at what credits?
So, that would be at the 30.4 level. In fact, the same applies to option three, the 1,700 would be for the 30.4 credits. And then, option three would be the master plan plus the full additional, and that's approximately for, in the case of Franklin and for grant. And we're using grant to replicate what we're doing at Franklin, because of the similarity around capacity, but it represents about a 20% increase in size. So, would not require boundary changes, but would only get about 85% of the schools, 54 of the, of the 63. So, this is the one that you, we had talked about with the bond accountability committee on Friday, and we had, I think, the summary that you have seen actually describes the schools that, you know, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be addressed.
And that, that, that's the 25 million dollar-
Figure from your table one of the potentialist of delayed summer improvement projects.
Right, right.
And it is a little confusing, because there's the sites, and then there's the projects, which varies from, so it's, it's, sometimes it's not apples to oranges when you do the arithmetic, but that's what that, your 25 million is.
And the last slide, before we get into Q and A, appreciate the question, continue certainly. This summarizes the, some of the contingency categories, if you will, as, as I'm currently defining them. When the bond was put in place, we had the, the program of the board reserve in the amount of 20 million. Currently, that's, that's at 10 million, assuming that the scope increases for the three high schools goes forward as schematic design. So, that would be the 10, so 10 remains. Bond premium is a amount I'd mentioned last week that we don't know if we're going to have access to. It's a little under 14 million through the first bond issuance. We'll know about this time next year if we have access to that. I don't know at this point how much we would or wouldn't have. Again, depends on availability, but I characterize it as a contingency of sorts. We have bond issuance that may be available as well. We initially planned for 3 million. We spent about 600,000 in the first bond issuance, so that could be something. And then we have the, what we call the COO, Chief Operating Officer contingency, which is the placeholder where we move funds into as projects complete and, and different changes occur. What's not shown here, of course, is the, is the escalation category. The $45 million that I explained earlier actually fully allocates to these schools, to these projects. So, any additional requirements we would have would, would have to come from one of these sources over the, you know, over the course of the program. So, with that, I'd like to see if you have any additional questions, comments?
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Jim. Questions?
Just, yeah, just on the, on the bond premium, essentially, we assumed a cost of that based upon a certain interest rate, and interest rates are lower than what we had assumed. Is that, could you explain that to everybody?
Okay, it's a, it's a function of the face value of the bond, which is 482 million, and for the, the rate, the dollar 10 per thousand assessed value, which we're trying to keep constant. And so, when the second issuance is, is done next spring, we likely would get feedback in terms of what impact that would have on the bond premium if we keep that tax rate constant. And I'm over my skis very quickly here in terms of what all the dynamics are-
And David's right behind you, if you want him to come up and do more with it.
David Wind, our deputy chief financial officer, may you want to add additional comments on that?
Let me divvy you up.
It's been a long night.
David Wind, deputy CFO. So, when we, when we went out to market the first time and issued the first bonds, the way those were priced was a market-based decision, and it resulted in that premium. We won't, until we're further along in the bond program, we won't know whether or not we can capture that $14 million as additional proceeds or not, because we, in addition to being governed by the $482 million, which is the face value of bonds that we're limited to by the, the vote, we're also working to stay at a tax rate of a dollar 10 per thousand or less. We're not legally obligated to do that, but we have a commitment to the community to try and stay within that. And so, until we have more, more years' experience of where we go with tax assessed value growth, we don't know whether we can capture that $14 million as additional proceeds or not, because in the first instance, the premium was just a factor of, of how you price the bonds. And so, at this point, to stay within a dollar 10 a thousand, we have to hold the bond premium to one side. If, in, over the next couple of years, tax assessed value grows faster, at high, you know, at a higher rate than we assumed, and then depending on what happens with the second bond issue, we may be able to capture some of that $14 million and still stay within a dollar 10. But at this point, we've just had one year of tax assessed value growth and not quite one full year of collection, so it's, it's premature to know how much of that is available. But it's entirely possible that a significant portion of that, over the course of this eight-year program, would actually be available to us. But at this point, it's too soon to make that call.
And, and are there not models out there that we can run that, that anticipate, or, I mean, just to get a little more clarity on that issue, because it's a significant amount of money?
Yeah, we can, we can run models, but-
It is, it's a model.
Well, and our country runs on models.
But what the models will say, if tax assessed value grows at these certain rates relative to what we assumed when we put the bond program together, then yeah, maybe we'll be able to capture some of that.
Yeah.
But, but until we know what actually happens in relation to that, we won't know. And it, and there's more than one variable. The other variable, as I said, is what our collection rate is going to be. We are, we're working with our financial, financial advisor to start developing those models, but they're not, they're not going to give us any great certainty about how soon yet. Every year that goes by will, will help us, because as, you know, we'll have another year of actual experience to know what those changes are relative to what we assumed when we put the bonds in place in the first place.
Okay.
Believe me, if we could, if, if we could give you access to that $14 million now, we would do that in a heartbeat, but it's, it's too soon. It's definitely there as a possibility, but it's, it's too early, because this is, this is an eight-year program. It's too soon after one year to be able to say with certainty where we are with that, unless you want to go above a dollar 10 as a tax rate. If you want, if you're willing to go above a dollar 10, then we can give you access to that money, but I don't think that's somewhere you want to go at this point.
Thank you.
Others?
Thank you, Devin.
Is there a question? Steve?
I'm of the opinion, Summer, to, Kevin, I believe was his name, that we should stay pretty darned close to what we said we should, which means, to me, the basic idea is that we do not in any way cut back on the seismic stuff. So, if we don't cut, cut back on the seismic, what does that mean? If we said, okay, we're going to do that for sure, what does that, how does that affect, how would that affect Franklin High School?
So, the way it would impact Franklin, and Debbie, you may want to speak to this.
How many, how many million would we be short of 12 classrooms?
Spread the wealth here and answer for some of these. Debbie, you want to take that?
Well, there's, there's two different answers to that. If you're just talking additional criteria, we were talking approximately 7 million, 8.2 when you had in soft class for Franklin, if you do not do any of the additional criteria. I think what, what was important to your question is, when we talk about option two in this middle ground, you're, you're trying to wrap, what can we do in the IP projects versus trying to get to a greater capacity at Franklin High School? And this option two, the midway point, provides you with the opportunity to complete roof and seismic projects in total, and science classrooms in total, and hit 62 out of 63 schools in total while providing additional capacity at Franklin.
So, that's option two?
That's option two.
So, that wouldn't, so, let me clarify from my own understanding again. That would, so if we kept all the seismic, then we could go with option two, which would add how much to Franklin? What would it do?
Cut that here.
Yeah.
Because again, they all over the options, I don't have your option two here.
But Steve-
Option two's up here, 1,500. So, it'd be 1,500.
This plan would remove all, would it remove all ADA and elevators, or would it remove some?
No, it would reduce the scope to just doing the roof and seismic work at those facilities, at the 62 out of 63. So, you would hit all of the seismic at the IP projects, but it would postpone-
My question is, what does it do in terms of ADA and elevator?
The impact on the IPs, and one of the reasons to go through the slide on the, on the funding options, is the delay, if you will, of those scopes would be dependent upon getting access to, to this money. So, delaying the, if we prioritize the roof seismic, then it would delay doing the ADA work, the elevators primarily, and some of the non-structural seismic work.
Would it get done, though?
All of the ADA elevator work would be delayed, or a few of them?
Not all of it, the work that we've accomplished through IP 15, but it would be beyond that, that would be delayed. And part, part of the paradox we find ourselves in here is the, the planning for IP 16 doesn't occur for another, another year or so. So, if we find ourselves a year from now in a place where we have a sense of what is available here, then, then we have that conversation separately. But what we've planned thus far is through IP 15. So, 16, 17, 18, or even 19 could still be put back in, so we're, we're using the term delay or postpone. And instead, what we're showing in option two is trying to ensure that we, we are hitting all but one of the schools in the IP program, and that we're, we're getting the seismic and the roofing.
So, what I'm, what I'm trying to understand, do we have any documentation that would show what schools would be at risk in terms of the ADA? Did we receive any of that?
The memo that I think you're holding is-
So, which ones, which ones would be- I think option two is some portion of table one, that list.
It's the roof and seismic and table one is option two.
Okay.
Right, I actually have a more complete list that shows, based on our revised analysis, what, what the impact would be. And, and really, it, it depends on which, which of these options is, is identified, because the number of schools that we would get to under option three, the, option three is more in line with the memo that I think you have from myself to Superintendent Smith. That's what that describes. Table one is the schools that wouldn't, that would have that work delayed, and it would result in 54 of the 63 schools having some improvement at them. Then the next one, option two, you, you don't, you don't have right now, but I, I have that data.
So, it was an attempt to try to find a middle ground and give us a middle option? So, if I'm understanding correctly, option three would be in your, in your memo from the 21st, everything on table one would be delayed?
Correct.
Under option two, what we would have from table one would be the roof seismic and the seismic, with the exception of Cleveland's roof.
Correct.
But none of the remaining things on table one?
Except for ADA.
No ADA or elevator?
What's, what's difficult is, you know, we talk in terms of projects, and we have one per summer, but projects are made up of schools, which are made up of work scopes. So, it's about how do you balance the work scopes that go into the school, that go into the project, which is part of the calculus?
But again, just so that I'm clear, under option two, when you say 62, 63 IP schools remain intact, you mean in terms of the roof and seismic, not the ADA or elevator? That is being, that would not be included?
That would be postponed until you-
Okay, just want to be clear.
Postpone until we had access.
Or not done.
Or not done.
Or potentially not done.
And I'll just, I'll just say, that's a huge, huge concern for me. I totally appreciate what you've done here in trying to provide multiple options for us to try to land this, because we need to land it. Totally appreciate that, and that you heard, I mean, obviously, seismic is a huge priority, but I would say even that ADA and elevator access is also a huge issue. We may not hear as much about it, but it's part of our responsibility and part of the promise of what we need to do for the schools that are waiting in the meantime. So- the meantime. So, um, I totally appreciate what you came forward with, that it was responsive to what we were trying to, as we were trying to land this. Um, but that, that, um, it, we need to go beyond the roof and seismic. We need to do the, the ADA and the elevators part of the promise to the voters and our community as well, is what I, is my take on it.
And the roof of Cleveland.
And the roof of Cleveland. But again, not a, you know, not a criticism of what you've done here, because you've worked hard to try to be responsive to our, to our concerns and issues. I appreciate that.
I think it's a little ironic that in our bond videos, we had, in our bond videos, it was Cleveland that we highlighted with the buckets in the hallway with the rain coming in. So, I mean, just, got to think about that. Steve?
If we did everything in the bond right now, are we off at all? If we just did what we originally said we would do, how much money are we short? Are we short any money to do that, or are we on, we, are, are we there?
We, we're there.
We are there? Okay, so how much money are we short in order to do the twelve classrooms, twelve classrooms, twelve classrooms, let's say?
Twelve, twelve, three.
What's the total amount of money we're short?
In, in the total program, you mean?
No, in the, just overall. Okay, suppose I was a multimillionaire, Bill Gates, and I said, I'm going to give you a certain amount of money. You already have everything in the bond. How much more would you need to do the three additional schools with the additional add-ons?
Additional criteria.
Yes.
Well, that's where the twenty-five million is coming out of the...
Right. Um, I, just, just quickly, and it, it's late, and I'm, um, we're, I don't want to throw numbers around. I said earlier, I, we got a...
I mean, okay.
Is, is it going to be about twenty-five million?
Yeah, about twenty-five million.
But I, yeah, I, I don't want to throw...
So if we found twenty-five million someplace, now, is, and there's, I think places, no, I think we could take seven million a year, in the next four years, out of our general fund. But the, uh, I could find it, let's just cut from fourteen million to seven million in our consulting, uh, contracts. That's seven million, that's twenty-eight million in the next four years. And the, uh, the, so, does... Would that do it? Twenty-eight million? If we handed you twenty-eight million out of that the next four years, would that do it? And then my other question is, do you, the other question is, that sounds like it would do it. But the, the other question is, if you build later, what is it, is there a chance that some of those additional things would come up, uh, that we would have money within our bond to build in the extra classrooms?
Well, just, just like...
I mean, you had the fourteen million, you had the ten million. We're going to get down to the end, theoretically, we have the ten million, but, but prices are going up again.
Right.
I mean, prices are going to go up three years from now, they're going to be more than they are. Do we have that figured in, an inflationary thing, or is that part of your escalation? Is that, but the escalation we've already used part?
Well, we, we've applied the escalation to the, to the known projects currently. So Fabian's in that, the three high schools are in that, the IPs are in that through IP fifteen right now. What we would need to evaluate is, um, what, what other risks are out there, and it's, it's hard...
We really don't know.
It's, it's hard to say, and I...
But twenty-eight million in the next four years from the general fund might do that whole thing? It's possible? I, thank you very much.
Terms of multiple, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's dollars that are needed for the investment in these projects.
And then, and we would then be able to go to the community and say, hey, hey, we, we did what we said we were going to do, so now give us another bond, which is going to be awful hard, I agree. It's going to be real hard if we don't do what we said we were going to do, to turn around and get another bond. Could we borrow the money? Could we borrow the money for the twenty-eight million and then pay it off from the general fund? And do the, and do the, uh, who would answer that?
We, we would need to evaluate that in terms of...
Could we borrow that money? And, and could we borrow twenty-eight million and then pay it off with seven million or something like that? Uh, that's the superintendent. Is that possible?
For us to go borrow twenty, another twenty-eight million?
I mean, could we borrow money and then pay it off like that, theoretically?
Any of these solutions are ones you could consider.
I mean, it's a possibility, is what I'm saying. I mean, it's not, there's nothing against the law to say we can't borrow money.
And I, and part of what we're trying to make visible to you is you have multiple scenarios that are possible, and you're adding to those scenarios for discussion.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, is that one.
I hear you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Others?
Just a clarification. I noticed that, um, on table one, um, Arlita is on here for ADA and elevator that would be put off. Um, but I believe we're doing some roof work at Arlita this summer. Was that planned to be split, or would we pull, or is there work already expected to happen at Arlita this summer that would be pulled out? Or are we going back to Arlita twice?
There, there are a number of schools, um, in the IP program that were, were impacting multiple times over multiple summers. That's one of them. Uh, and it gets back to the methodology we use that we presented to you about how we selected the IP thirteen schools, the fourteen schools, and the fifteen schools.
Great.
Okay.
Correct?
So I'll just, um, say, I mean, again, I really appreciate, um... The work the staff has done, the integrity and the professionalism with which you have done it, and the responsiveness both to our various comments and inputs over these many months, as well as obviously huge amount of community input. So, um, it's just been outstanding work, and we're really lucky to have you. And, and also appreciation to the bond accountability committee for being that, that, those experts, um, with, from the outside. So I'm, I'm, after much consideration, and this is a change from what I had, where I had been indicating it was previously, I'm with sticking with the, the master plan in December, and, um, working with what we have, the, the status quo, if you will. Um, because that already did reflect an increased size and scope and budget from, um, the original. And, um, to me, uh, it will be fully seismically upgraded, and it will be an outstanding program and design, as, as we've seen. Um, and to me, you know, the change, there's going to be changes guaranteed. We've already heard tonight about labor costs, escalation in, in materials. Um, per student funding, God knows, is not constant in this state, so that's going to change. Um, workload agreements, contracts, you know, all sorts of pieces, potentially the length of the day, boundaries. So all those things are, you know, there's so many moving parts that are going to change and that we can also affect. But what we can't change and we mustn't change is what we had promised to the voters. And, um, I totally get and, um, appreciate the risk of not having as much, um, program flexibility with those additional classrooms as we would now like to have. And then it's going to require some tough trade-offs on the ground and making it work in the schools and for students. And, um, the risk that we could potentially, if everything goes our way in all scenarios, and then we end up, we could potentially end up with some extra funding at the end of this, and have, you know, with the smaller size, um, smaller compared to the, it's still larger than we originally said, I just want to keep saying that, and it's still going to be awesome, but then not as large, um, of initial high schools. So I, I get that, that that's a risk and a concern and an issue. But to me, the largest, um, piece here is that we need to be, to be true to that original, um, that original program and the original scope. So again, I truly appreciate what staff has done in tracking this every step of the way and being responsive to us. But now we need to make that call. So that's, that's the call I've made, and you can hear where others are, but we do need to make that decision next week, approve a schematic design and move forward. And I'm thrilled to be moving forward. It is going to be an awesome, all three schools are going to be, all four schools that are fully modernized, and the improvements, it's going to be great.
Other, um, Tom or Steve, do either one of you want to chime in here and, uh, help with the staff as they're trying to prepare resolutions for us next year, next week? It would be helpful to hear what you're thinking.
Sure.
Which one of the options, or whatever else you want to add to that?
Um, I, I guess, I'm still, um, sifting through it all. I mean, I, what I don't want to do is build a high school where kids are limited to, um, six classes. Uh, and so if, um, so, you know, that, that's, that's number one. But I also respect the, um, you know, I think it's, it is very important that we, that we stick to, uh, what we said we were going to do, um, and the public trust, and the bond accountability committee made that clear, and Ruth, your, your comments, I think are right on in that respect. Um, so then, um, so then there's, there's, then we, I think we have to look, and I'd like to have some more information, not tonight, but in, in terms of, um, what does it mean to build these high schools, um, with our existing budget, and, um, in terms of what we can do with different schedules, um, with boundary changes, um, so understanding, I think I need to understand personally that piece a little bit more. Um, so that's, that's essentially where, where my head is at the moment.
Andrew, do you have something you want to make?
Yeah. Um, personally, I think right now I'm leaning towards option two. Um, I am worried about presenting to the voters the next bond, if we haven't met what we agreed we were going to do. But I'm also worried about, uh, not following through with our other, you know, ask of the community when we approve this bond, which was, we are going to give these high schools twenty-first century buildings. And I feel like if we don't give them what we know now is exactly what they need, then we're not only doing a disservice to those schools and those communities, but I think we're also setting, I think, a bad precedent for ourselves in the future when we look at these projects, so.
Okay. Did you something else?
Yeah, which is, add, which is the other thing, in, in the bond that we pass in, in the compact essentially with the voters, um, it, it said up to sixty-three. Well, that is ambiguous. And so the, the other thing I would like to do is, uh, is to take the ambiguity out of that. And, you know, maybe the number is sixty. Uh, maybe it's sixty-one, maybe it's sixty-two. But, I mean, there is flexibility here, um, and I think that we, that we need to, to, to land on a, on a number. Um, and I'm not convinced sixty-three is the, the right number. I, I, you know, sixty could be the, could be the number.
Yeah, could I just do an add-on? Sure, Ruth, go ahead.
Yeah.
I think, Andrew, I mean, I...
Totally respectful. You said, I think, though, that we will get a twenty-first century building and an, and an outstanding building either way. And a lot of the additional criteria are based on sort of the current assumptions and our current state and reality of many different pieces. And, and, you know, the last, all the things that have changed related to high school schedule over the last couple of years, it's just kind of mind-boggling, actually, all the different pieces. So I hear what you're saying, but I also feel like to assume that that is going to remain the reality going into the future is not necessarily, again, state funding could change, any number of pieces could change. So I get that it will be more difficult to do what we want to do. We might be able to serve fewer students in that building, and that would be, that would be a huge downside. But that might be what we just have to do, given the, the scope and the money that, that we've been provided in this bond that we have. So that's, but it's, it is a huge trade-off to, to weigh.
Um, I think my highest priority is to be true to our voters if we expect them to, or hope that they will consider, um, contributing again. Um, we've always talked about this being a thirty-year plan. Um, and the only way you're going to get there is if you do what you say you're going to do. Um, so I do think there's some things that have changed since, um, we passed the bond, and that includes passing our teacher contract, trying to reduce our student-teacher ratio, um, adding more credits for students to take. So I am still wanting information on, for example, if we, uh, looked at a staggered teacher schedule, um, so that we could actually offer another credit each day. Already, we'd do that as, with a waiver process, where we have a zero period in some classes. How many more, uh, opportunities would that give us in terms of, uh, credits for our students? Um, the reason I was asking about the genius bar, um, is it sounds so utterly cool and wonderful, but it also sounds like a nice-to-have and not a have-to-have. And that's the reason I was asking about that. I, I view certain things as has-to-have, um, but when I was on the Roosevelt Design Team, I don't recall seeing any kind of a genius bar. Um, so to me, that, we have some other options that I think we still need to look at, and I don't want to be delaying the plan. Um, but at the same time, I think we need to do a little bit more homework still before, um, next week. I have huge concern about pushing twenty-five million dollars of, uh, summer projects. We keep using this term IP, which means nothing to the public. IP is basically summer projects. Um, we keep talking about, you know, potentially pushing twenty-five million dollars in summer projects off into the next bond. Well, that has an impact on what we do in the next bond. In the next bond, our hope was to go out and build our next three high schools, and all of a sudden, you carve twenty-five million dollars off the top to do your ADA work or your seismic work, that has, that has ramifications. It's not just pushing it off. It's, it, at some point, you got to come up with those dollars.
Like paying for Rosa Parks.
Hmm?
Like paying for Rosa Parks.
Well, we did that, yeah. So, um, I, I'm at this point wanting to, I, I, I need more information in terms of what we really could do in terms of credits, and I, and I think it's reasonable to be asking staff, uh, if we were to look at a staggered teacher schedule, what, how that would help us or not. If there are some areas, um, in any of our designs at this point that really are nice-to-haves rather than must-haves, and I guess I'm specifically looking at so far the Roosevelt and Franklin designs, and if there's things that one school has, the other one totally doesn't have, um, let's look at it and see i- if, if there is some room there to add a couple of classrooms. I don't know. Um, I mean, my, my main thing is I want to be true to what we've told voters, and if we're not, um, we deserve to have them say, sorry, we're not going, we're not doing this again with you. So we, we have to figure it out. Um, and we have lots of new criterion information that we're trying to put in the mix, so I, I need more information before I can tell you where I'm going to land, but I think I'm projecting a little bit.
Yeah, my feeling is we should be able to find at least a few more classrooms, and then if we get down at the end of the bond and we have money left over, we could add more classrooms. And I think one of the, in each school, we can find two classrooms by moving the preschool maybe over to the, over to a elementary school. That, I mean, they're right there on the site practically. I mean, they're within walking distance, particularly, uh, at Grant and at, at, uh, uh, Franklin. And I think we should go and look at some of that space that we're talking about as twenty-first century, where you get kids out into this open area. I don't think the open area space is anymore twenty-first century or twenty-second century or twentieth century one way or the other, personally. Maybe I'm wrong. It's very possible I am, but I don't, I think we could capture a little space there. Maybe we add three, maybe four classrooms. I think we could get some money out of the budget. We found seven million this year in the middle of it. I think that some of that money's going to come up, and we could earmark it. Think we could find some money that's in our regular budget to add a little more. We can maybe get six classrooms in there, uh, out of what we have by doing those things, and then you could add on another, uh, six if you have the money at the end of the bond. So you've taken some of the pressure off, uh, and, and I don't have a problem with staggered schedules. I don't think most teachers or kids do, to tell you the truth. Uh, and I think we could think about that. And that would, because I think that teachers are right when they complain they don't have those classroom space, and they're going to have to have those problems. And we need to work on that, but we're correcting an error that we made. And you don't get to correct your errors perfectly in this world, but that'd kind of take the steps to it, and then we say, okay, we get down towards the end, we're going to add more money. Okay, we got more money. Let's add on. So I just think those are all distinct possibilities, and I'd like to see us come back with something that looked like that, even if you did three million out of the general budget. You know, that would do quite a, that would add, maybe get six classrooms out of it. That's quite a few to add on right now on top of what we had said. I don't think we have to, if we did that, I don't necessarily would guess we maybe wouldn't have to do boundary changes. I think boundary changes scare the heck out of people. But you may have to, but that's what I think, which is what you asked. Thank you, Pam, for asking.
Got you. Great. You have something?
Sure.
Okay.
I think, is that right? One, I just want to say, um, thank you again to the design teams and staff, because as you can see, we have a million different options. Um, and staff has been working tirelessly to get us the options that we have to make sure that the numbers match. Sometimes I worry when we sit up here and say, oh, I'll just grab three million from here and seven million from there. It becomes a little bit magical, like we're all sitting in money, because I hear us say we want to invest in, um, librarians, we want to invest in a variety of things, but all of a sudden, when we need seven million for this, we can somehow find it. So I just want to say thank you to, to staff. So I just want to say thank you to staff to give us the presentations. I think from what I heard from the bond accountability committee is it's time to make some choices that you can't, you can't have everything that you want within this, within this one package. I mean, as we've gone, we've learned additional things, and by want, I don't mean to, to make it sound like it's extraneous. Students taking 30.7, 30.8 credits is not extraneous. Some of those are makeup recovery classes, some of those are additional classes. So does not that we're trying to build something, everybody, what I heard from our community loud and clear, right, is we want lower class sizes. That, that's not an extra, that is sound educational practice. I hear people often say, "Where's the educational side of the house?" And there's the educational side of the house, is we want better student teacher ratios. At the same time, as clear in testimony tonight and as my email box is showing, we were speaking to different constituents with different parts of this bond community. We designed the bond from community input, and people wanted seismic safety for their schools. They wanted additional classrooms for the K8s that we didn't, we didn't convert when we got there. Some people wanted the high schools. They knew they were our flagship. They recognized the partnership with Fabian K8, and they wanted to see us capitalize on it. To, to begin to pull money from one, one of those to support another begins to feel, I, again, I think the bond accountability committee, the scope changes well within the intent of the bond and the language of the bond, but I do think that, I do think that our community is expecting something slightly different than us changing the scope on this. And I also am reminded that when I helped a kindergarten roundup or kindergarten connect event at my daughter's school one year, and there was a gentleman that came in, in a wheelchair, and he rolled, you know, he came around and visited the first floor, but he couldn't make it to the second floor. And I thought, "What a shame that any member of our community cannot access our student, our school or their student's school." And so that became a real priority for me, the ADA accessible. And we have lots of families for whom that's the issue, that it's really important for them to be able to have full access to their school. So at this point, I, I am landing, I think probably more similar to where Ruth is, is that without the additional criteria to look at that initial scope size of 1,700, and I, we don't know what the schedules in the future will hold, and to Director Buell's point, boundary changes worry people. At the same time, we're also trying to get this to be where boundary changes happen more frequently. Our neighboring districts do it much more frequently, and that's not to say that we take it casually or lightly, or that they, people don't make decisions based on where that is. At the same time, our long-range facility plan makes clear that building your way out of overcrowding is the most expensive option, and they didn't recommend that. So the work, again, I think of thousands of voices. There have been thousands of voices that informed our going out to the voters, as well as the long-range facility plan and beyond that. So I guess that's where I'm landing, and again, I thank you for, for all your efforts and, and options that you presented.
Okay. So just my thoughts and where I'm heading. First of all, thank you to staff. Excellent presentations, everybody. Appreciate that, especially, and also the bond accountability committee and stepping up. I think that's great. Looking forward to working with them more in-depth in the future. I guess what I would say is that the only thing that's constant is change. And if we could just be constant and not have change, we wouldn't have these issues. But we can't be. And just while, similar to what's happening right now, as we've seen some changes, we're going to continue to see changes. But one of the things that hasn't changed and won't change is what we promised the voters. And so the things that I think about, and it had been mentioned by other board members, is three high schools, Fabian in partnership with Concordia, new roofs, so we don't see those buckets in the middle of the hallways or in classrooms, seismic to keep our children safe, access so that all of the members of our community can be in our schools, and let's not forget about the science labs, so that we can teach our kids STEM. So those are the things that I think we promised to the voters and that are the most concerned to me. On the other hand, if we did some of these changes, the things that concern me are the uncertainty of the funds. So we have schedule, scope, and budget, right? So budget is how could we still do all of those things, but we know we can't. So, and, and some of the things we're relying on, like bond sales, contingencies, cost of construction, are they going to go up, down? My guess is they're going to go up, and they're going to keep going up from what we're seeing and the competitive, because of the competitiveness right now in getting people to do that work. So I guess the other part of it is, to go back to the change piece again, we have a lot of change, and in addition to what's mentioned in our long-range facility plans, we have a lot of other levers that we can use in this district. Somebody, somebody mentioned boundary changes already, which is one of the top things that is suggested in the long-range facilities plan that we use and that we're actually studying at this very moment. So boundary changes is one. The size of the schools, are any of these schools going to be at 1,700 students when we open the doors? I don't know. Probably not. They're close. Some of them will be close, but not if we change the boundaries. So other, other levers. Community spaces. Eventually, additional schools will be able to open. The value engineering Jim's talked about so many times. How do we, how do we use that? And then we have our discussions with our teachers around schedule changes. So maybe we won't have six of eight classes, maybe someday it'll be five of seven again, and then it'll be seven classes and not eight classes. So the number, the amount of change that's ongoing in this district, and it's not a bad thing, I mean, change helps us, it's a good thing, but we have to, to realize that it's the only thing that's constant. And so for me, the only other thing that's constant is my word to the voters. And so I'm going to be somebody who's landing back on doing, in, doing the work without the additional criteria. Others? Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, yeah, I guess I'll put a shade, shading on there, which is, is I think it's possible to keep the word with the voters and look at some of the additional criteria. So, and you actually said, mentioned it yourself, which was, okay, what, what are we going to do with each school? So for me, it's, I, I think we ought to have an ability to have 30-plus credits for high schoolers to take. We can do that in the high school with the existing budget. And so when, so I, I guess that's the only thing I want, I want to say, is, is that that additional criteria is an important one, and there are, there's ways to make that happen within budget. And that's where I want to be.
That would be part of what we would figure out as we go, as we work through this, and as we see where we land in terms of our, our funding and all other pieces when we get to having these schools be operational. Is that what you're, I mean, what you're saying is that this is, the additional criteria is not necessarily the only way that we can get to that goal.
Yeah.
Right.
So in terms of us preparing a resolution for you, what I'm hearing is people being pretty firmly on, here's what we want to do with the building, which is where we were with the master plan, with 1,700.
Right.
Period, and honor the, the summer work that we had committed to in total and the high schools as it stood back in December.
No, and the Director Morton isn't here.
And no Director Morton isn't here, but that's, that's the resolution I hear us doing in terms of, here's what we're doing with our buildings. I think a number of the other things I'm hearing are not things that are going to change your decision.
Right.
They're then, okay, here are the other things, like as, here's the commitment we're making, and here's the decision we're making next week and voting on, which is that commitment, full summer work as committed, high schools as defined in the bond. The things we've learned since then, and I think Pam's point, that it's going to continue to change. One of the biggest values we've said is flexibility over time.
Right.
And that these are going to be used really differently, you know, and we'll figure out how to use the space, like whatever space we have, we'll figure out creatively how to use it. A number of the other things are the other levers of how do we offer program. It will be boundaries, so yes, we will start talking boundaries fairly swiftly in terms of what does that mean? It may be schedule changes. There's a bunch of other things, but they are not going to impact the decision you make next week.
The building, the master plan.
Nor will they be figured out by next week.
Right.
Those are other things that will then be, okay, now what are the other, other levers that can be pulled in terms of how we maximize programs to kids? But for next week purposes, I hear the resolution we're preparing is building as they were originally, master plan.
That, that's what I'm hearing?
And I would also...
And I'm looking more for, like, what I don't want to do is leave here and have different people giving direction about what other scenarios you want. I don't think anything I heard was something you needed in order to have the resolution next week. The things I heard were much more after that than how do we use the space that we've committed to build. And I'm more looking for, is that accurate?
And I would also say to my colleagues that, at least in the materials that we had today, we had Franklin 46 days behind and Roosevelt 110 days behind.
That's right.
So there, there cannot be any more delay.
Oh, and actually, Amanda just texted me saying we don't need a resolution to not change, so, like, we can just do schematic design next week, so we're not changing. There you go.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah. I mean, truly, I mean, that is, you are looking at a resolution to amend the ed specs.
Right.
To add the additional criteria, which you're electing not to do, which is, then we just do the Franklin design next week, that schematic design.
And again, you were saying before that you have, you have the alternative of the original ready to go and planned out, and...
That applies to Roosevelt as well, so if I interpret what you've said tonight, then we would apply this to both Franklin and Roosevelt, which course is approximate, and then Grant, two years to maintain our facility parity for the rest of the three high schools.
And then what we will need to look at is if, we will have to go back to the ed specs at some point, because we will now need to look at what we need to do elsewhere to accommodate our number of students, but, yeah.
Right. And we had wanted, oh, sorry, go ahead. Bobby?
I would just say before, at least for me, I feel like I would finalize this, is I do need to understand a little bit better how we're going to accommodate the credit situation, because at least in this memo, it indicated that if we don't add 12 classes at Franklin, we could only accommodate 1,250 students. I personally don't believe that, but I would like to have you do some work with us and maybe folks in the community to help us understand what the actual real options are. And again, that's why I'm asking about staggered schedule. I'm asking about the possibility of converting a space or two at Franklin, perhaps, back into general classroom space, which to me makes perfect sense. So I would like to see a few other options, so we know we're not really limiting ourselves to 1,250 students. That doesn't make any sense.
But, but again, I mean, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ruth.
So again, I think, but what I hear Carol saying, what it, what makes sense to me is that we go with a schematic design that's been worked out and approve that, and then figure out within that as we go forward and within all the parameters that we have and the levers and all the different possibilities, how we make it work. And again, there's flexibility built into this plan that we can, whether it's this issue or other issues, we can accommodate and flex and change and be creative.
I just want to know that we can make it work, because if you change the boundaries, that doesn't make it work. I mean, you're still talking 1,250 students, so that doesn't make it work by changing the boundaries. So I, I guess I want to...
1,700 is what we were talking about.
Well, we're talking 1,700, but it's in terms of trying to do credits for 7.6 credits per student, they said we can only accommodate 1,250 students, so changing boundaries doesn't change that.
So we use the other levers that we had.
So I, I guess I want, I want to understand how we're going to get closer to the number of credits that we want our kids to take. I mean, we just passed a teacher contract, we just got sued by the parent group, we have other obligations. Personally, I want to do what the voters told us to do. I want to understand that we can do that and have enough options at our disposal that we can live up to some of these other commitments.
Yeah. Great.
So go do that.
Yeah, go forward.
But without tweaking this...
Please make it work without making us having to make choices.
Yeah, I mean, again, we...
Stop changing.
I think we can make it work.
Well...
And with this current schematic design, though, again, I mean, I feel like for us at this point to say, "Well, let's take a wall out here or change this room there," we need to go with what the design is that's, you know, through this long process with multiple voices that, that it's been landed on. So to me, yes, we can, it'll be an ongoing conversation in figuring out how to make all this work with all the pluses and minuses, but we need to work with the schematic design that's been landed on.
But that will come back to you next week.
Yeah. And approve this for approval, so that we can move forward.
Any other? And I will say, we can give you some sense of what do you get from doing a staggered schedule within our contract. I mean, we can give you a sense of a number of these other things, and just getting that you're getting these as like theoretical things in terms of how a building gets used, and you've got kid schedules that vary all, I mean, you've got a whole lot of other variables in here, and we've given you a lot of the scenarios and a lot of the trade-offs, and I know what we all want is make it all work and don't make it cost more money, and you're getting the trade-offs. I don't know how to cut it any other way for you. I mean, truly. So next week, what will come back to you is the, is a Franklin schematic design that you've seen, essentially, and we will work on giving you more sense of, like, how do we actually use the building in creative ways that make it work, the right, and maximize? I mean, we'll always work to maximize the space to make it work for kids, so that's what we'll do.
And you will tell us that based on today and two years, three years from now, when the building opens?
It will totally be different. It'll keep changing.
But we'll keep working on it.
And we'll keep working on it. And our funding will keep changing, and what number of teachers we have will keep changing. I mean, truly, our schedule will keep changing.
And the number of students will keep changing.
How much we're co-programming with other entities will keep changing.
Other options for credit access, PCC.
Hybrid models, with the kids out of the school and doing a lot of stuff online.
Flexibility.
There's all kinds of things that are going to happen in the next, so many years.
Okay. And it sounds like you've landed.
But I appreciate that.
Landed.
I think we're done.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Anything else? No? Okay. Yep, there you go.
I'll remember that this is unbelievably exciting.
Yes.
And the schools are going to be wonderful.
They are.
They may not be everything we all dreamed of, but they're going to be absolutely incredible, so.
Thank you. They're going to be fantastic, and thanks to the voters, I think.
Thank you, voters.
We can all thank the voters. Yay, voters! So that's great. Okay. And thank you to all of you who presented to us, and I appreciate that. And with that, I think it's true, we're adjourned. The next meeting of the board will be held on Monday, June 2nd, and this meeting is adjourned.[1698.63]